Presbyterian Church, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council members for this opportunity to pray for you. Heavenly Father, our Creator, we are so grateful to be a part of this wonderful community where we are blessed to live, and we are so grateful also to be a part of a nation, a nation of laws, a nation of rights, a nation of freedom. We pray, oh Lord, for our country in challenging times that we might be guided to make the right critical decisions. We also pray for this meeting, that these men and women who represent us, who have been chosen by us to be our leaders, might be granted an extra dose of compassion and wisdom and understanding, that they might listen to one another and to the concerns of their constituents, that they might speak clearly and honestly, and that what comes out of this meeting might be best for all. We commit this meeting and these our leaders to you. I pray this in the name of the God whom I love and serve. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Now would you join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Councilman Slackton, if you could lead us, please?
It would be done, our mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba. Here. Councilman Dewitt.
Here.
Councilman Slackton.
Here.
Mayor Simmons.
Here.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Here.
Councilman Gibson.
Here.
Councilman Forbes.
Ah, here.
You can't say "ah" yet, there's nothing to vote on.
That's alright.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning. And at this point, we'd like to take public comment on agenda items. Any member of the public that would like to speak on agenda items, please come forward. Good morning, Rick.
Good morning, Mayor. Rick Steinmeier, for the record. We made a deal with Lee County, we're gonna get a library, but I thought it cost $25 million to build a library in Lee County, and they're limited themselves to $14 million. And we gotta put Phil dirty, and there's a lot of stuff that the city's gonna have to come up with, besides paying the property tax to the library, library tax for so many years. I'm really concerned about whether they're gonna be able to build this library for 14 million, and who's gonna get stuck for the rest of it? And the taxpayer's gonna pay for it, and then if they abandon it, then the city people gotta pay for it again. What kind of deals are we making with the Lee County? So we get this coming and going, it's all taxpayers' money. I really need something from the government that I can see and use and know that the taxpayer paid for, like sidewalks and roads, things that the people can't do themselves. The other things that, there's a lot of things that go on, like regulations and payroll that the average citizen doesn't see the benefit of it. But roads and sidewalks and landscaping and stuff that the people can really see and appreciate is a good thing. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Rick. Good morning, Kathy.
Good morning, everyone. For the record, Kathy McGrath, just a comment, and mine is about the library too, which is such a long time coming, and it's gonna be such a wonderful addition to our beautiful downtown area. And I hope all the monetary and things can be worked out, because we know it's gonna go there, we know we deserve it, and I know that you will all see that it is done, done properly, and that Lee County puts in the proper amount of money. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Good morning.
Good morning. Amanda Brock, for the record. I'm here for item 9A, which is a public hearing on the zoning and progress resolution. Would you like for me to make my comments now, or come back up at that time?
Please, if you'd like.
Okay, sure, thank you. I sent a letter to you all yesterday, and I do apologize for the late hour that you received that. This all came up kinda last minute on our end, and we tried to get that information to you as quickly as possible. I have had several conversations with staff, as well as with Audrey, and it sounds like, I think we agree that this property should be exempted from the zoning and progress, and so we do appreciate your consideration when that item is called. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Good morning, Ed.
Good morning, gentlemen and lady. I'm here to speak on item 12A, the attorney's proposal to write a letter to the Attorney General. There is not enough time here to explain why BSU ignored the Sunshine Law at their regular board meetings for years, but they did and still do. I want to tell you why the city attorney would defend BSU before the council when Mr. Jennings denied his company was subject to the Sunshine Law. There is too much evidence available to this council to refute what they have said. Now how will you take time to investigate? But we all know that for the past thirty years, BSU has been led under two executive directors only, Mr. Parton and Mr. Jenkins, and these men knew exactly what they have been doing, especially with the infamous effluent reuse agreement that Benita Bay, in that it wasn't approved by the county commissioners. They also know that the language appearing in the proposal that you guys voted on on April 3rd contained language that was not approved prior to showing up that first time. They also know that the irrigation water sold to BSU was not an accurate representation of the market value. As far as I know, no one checked, they just said it was, and it was agreed. I'm disappointed with the draft letter that the attorney has written to the Attorney General. It is a three-page argument in defense of BSU's non-compliance with Sunshine Law. It doesn't send the 1970 franchise to the Attorney General, and that is the franchise that is critical to understanding why and how BSU was formed. It describes BSU as being a private invested company. It is not. It should not take three pages of argument to ask a simple question, and it attempts to lead the Attorney General in the improper direction. The council has the responsibility to know that BSU complies with the government franchise in its totality, and that the public is fairly treated, and that their rights are protected. The Attorney General opinion will be the first step to determine that. It could also be determined by BSU just presenting to their city council documentation for what they have done. The effluent reuse agreement required county approval, it's not there. Things appearing on petitions that are controlled by the franchise should not appear, and you should not vote on them without discussion and debate. Again, the opinion of the Attorney General is the first step to determine if BSU has and does comply with the franchise, and that they are operating properly. I contend that they do not, and I think that it should be more than my belief, it should be you knowing yes or no. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ed. Anybody else from the public? Good morning, Michael.
Good morning. My name's Mike Maier, I'm here on behalf of the Burnwood Properties, specifically the Burnwood Park of Commerce. We currently have a mini-storage user that's been under contract since June 28th of 2016. The Burnwood Park of Commerce is a master plan park that is currently zoned for mini-storage that specific use is permitted. We have recorded covenants and deed restrictions and architectural review standards in our zoning that protect the public from having buildings that are not visually aesthetically pleasing. We don't allow metal siding, we do have landscape standards that we must adhere to, and all outside storage must be shielded and screened. There's also additional restrictions to ensure that the building looks good. The pre-app meeting, the current buyer had a pre-app meeting on August 4th of 2016, and I believe this is important. Benita Springs does not define in their code when you are deemed to be in process for your permit. In Collier County, which historically has been much more restrictive with respect to development, as soon as you have your pre-app meeting, you are deemed to be in process. And the reason for this is because this is the first time that the particular buyer, developer, is opening up their kimono, if you will, and showing people their idea to make money, and letting the public know, basically confidential information about what their plans are. This particular buyer, Johnson Development, is gonna build a great product, we're gonna make sure it's a great product. There's also been some concerns, I know, from the residents in the surrounding areas about their ability to see the product. This particular project will not front Benita Beach Road, it will not front Hunter's Ridge Boulevard, and it will not be visible once the remaining lands in the back of the business park are built. This particular buyer has spent considerable dollars on architects and engineers already, and they should be able to reasonably rely on the rules in place as of the date of the pre-app meeting. So like Ms. Brock, I would like to request that Johnson Development, specifically at the Burnwood Park of Commerce, also be exempt from item 9A. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mike. Good morning.
Bob Bachman.
Morning, Bob.
Resident and business owner here in town. Morning, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm here also on 9A. My son and I have recently closed on the purchase of a small parcel. It's on Surveyor Creek Road, which is immediately north of the City Mattress site. It's a small dirt road that runs back to the east, butts the drainage canal that runs on the east side of City Mattress. We are looking there to build essentially a storage building for our own purposes. It won't be rented, it won't be public. I have met with the city attorney and with the community development folks prior to purchasing the property. We closed on it on August 4th, and are in the, it will require a rezone of the property as it's currently zoned ag, and in the interstate interchange area. So what we would like to do is be exempt from the ordinance, go through the process under the current conditions, and proceed rather than wait a period of time. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else from the public like to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on, and...
I'm sorry. I got up to speak and you said seeing none.
You've already spoken, Ed.
You only got to speak on one item?
Only one. You can speak, there's two other opportunities to speak at the meeting, but you've exhausted round one. Okay, very good, very good. Thanks. Thank you very much. We're gonna move on now to proclamations and presentations, and Carl, if you could introduce this next item, please? Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Today we have with us Mr. John DePalma of McMahon Associates. As the council's aware, for some time now, they've been working on a plan for a citywide connectivity, and John is here today to provide that report to council, so... Great. Thank you. And there he is.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning, welcome.
Actually, I'm Trent Ebersole with McMahon. John's usually here to present the projects we're working on, he's a much better speaker than I am, so hopefully you'll bear with me. What I wanna present on, and I'm happy to be here to give you an overview of the bicycle and pedestrian master plan for the city. One second. Oh, my pointer's not working.
Let's look into a new clicker, maybe, I don't know.
It was working earlier.
Okay, great.
Alright, so... There we go. So, you know, the genesis of this study was to comprehensively look at the city in terms of walkability and the ability to ride bicycles. We understand that the city, you know, sees Benita Springs as a sense of place, as a place that people wanna be, not just pass through on the way to the beach. One of the key characteristics of a city that gives that sense of place is the ability to walk around and bicycle around. And I understand that the city has already begun embarking on this with a desire to implement complete streets, this is just the next piece of the puzzle, if you will. So, the vision and the goals of this study were to create that sense of place, to make sure that there's access from different points of interest within the city and even outside of the city, to make sure that the travel ways within the city accommodate the non-motorized vehicles, whether it be walking or bicycling, in a safe and efficient manner. And also to recognize that even within that group, there are different types of users, and we need harmony amongst them. You know, for example, some people like to ride their bicycle 20 miles an hour on the roadway, others feel stressed when they're intermixed with motorized vehicles, so we took that into account as well. So briefly, the process was to take a look at what the city has today in terms of pedestrian and bicycle facilities, as well as, again, the different points of interest that you might wanna connect with these facilities, and even, you know, how the transit works in conjunction with all of that. Then the next step was to take a look at, well, what's missing, what's not there today, and we wanted to do that by talking to the residents and seeing what they feel is missing, as well as looking outside, how is everybody else doing, what's the latest technology? The step after that was to depict the future, if you will, on a plan, and then take the first look at how all of that could be implemented. This, I won't read the list, but there's a list of corridors that we vetted out with city staff. We also, a big contribution were some recent and ongoing studies. The key corridor network transportation evaluation study was, had basically four parts, one of which was to begin the implementation of complete streets within the city. And then, of course, the Benita Beach Road visioning study also is looking at accentuating pedestrian and bicycle facilities. We wanted to make sure that with everything that's going on in the city right now, that we're consistent. So, the needs assessment was the beginning. The master plan has a series of maps, that's basically an inventory of the different types of facilities. Pedestrian, bicycle, again, I mentioned how transit fits into that and the points of interest, and then went on, again, to look at the missing pieces and how can the facilities be enhanced. The next step, then, was the public involvement. We did have a workshop at the rec center on March 10th. We tried to talk to the people that were there, but in addition to that, we handed out surveys, and we had these maps available for people to mark on it and just draw what their thoughts were. In addition to the workshop, the surveys and maps were handed out through the Cafe of Life. We felt that there was a, you know, a target of residents there that might not wanna come out to the workshop, and who are deemed dependent upon, to a large degree anyhow, to non-motorized vehicles.
Thank you for doing that. Thank you.
You know, quickly, the results that came out of that were, the four roads that were talked about most by the residents were Terry Street, Shangri-La, Benita Beach Road, and Old 41. Those different types of users that I mentioned were discussed as well, you know, some people saying how they're not going to ride on a trail, they wanna be on the road, and other people who have no desire to be anywhere near the vehicles, they want separated facilities. And also, a regional trail was discussed. The MPO has plans for a trail to run north-south all the way through the city with destinations, you know, well beyond the city boundaries, and that's incorporated into the master plan as well. Then the next step was to develop a list of tools, things that can be used to enhance, improve upon what's out there today. This was the different types of facilities, whether it's bike lanes on the road, or separated multi-use trails, or separated dedicated trails, you know, specifically for pedestrians or bicycles. We also listed some treatments that can be location-specific, whether at an intersection or for crossing roadways, those types of things, and amenities and wayfinding or other things that can greatly enhance the bicycle and pedestrian experience within a city. And then that took us to developing the actual recommendation. The master plan itself is best defined in the long-range plan, which I have on another slide, I'll get in more detail. In addition to the, kind of, everything in one picture, we have a series of maps, again, for each individual type of facility, where it's easier to identify what the future projects might be. We did concentrate, in addition to just areas within the city, to make sure that there is regional connectivity. And then on the other end of the scale, some local pathways, which, again, I'll discuss a little more on the next slide. And again, I wanna emphasize that we really tried to make sure we were considering all users, again, maybe those people who are gonna stay on the roadways versus those who want dedicated facilities. Also, in going back to the slide that had other studies, there are plans in the works for enhancing the roadway network itself, and those enhancements are tied into this master plan as well, because some of those will provide key linkage in the transportation system where the, not just for motorists, but the bicycles and pedestrians can be better accommodated. So this is the long-range plan that I mentioned, it's a lot on one slide, and at this scale it's kinda hard to read, but in the legend, it lists all of the different types of facilities, and then you can find where, you know, where, basically, how it's supposed to look in the I mentioned the local pathway part of this. There's a series of pathways that run through the three parks, Island Park, Depot Park, and Riverside Park, and beyond. There are some other segments that are used today by bicyclists, and it provides a route from as far south as Pennsylvania Avenue all the way up to the rec center with some missing pieces. So this seemed like a good place to key in on and make sure that all of the appropriate facilities are there. One of the key things that makes it a less-than-desirable route is the crossing of Terry Street, so the master plan does have a recommendation for a safer crossing there. And then that brings me to the last step, which is implementation. You know, one of the important parts of a master plan, and, you know, having, we can have ideas, but to get it on paper is to be able to hold, you know, hold people's feet to the fire, if you will. As new development comes along, there are opportunities to make sure that any project that's built, whether by the city or by developers, that it includes the elements that the city wants to see. So this is why, you know, we believe this is an important piece to the puzzle. But in addition to that, it gives us the ability to start listing projects that the city or county can, or even state can embark upon to start pulling together all of the recommendations. And that said, I mean, there are components like, of course, the prioritization can be based on the funding and how, there's still a lot of work to be done, but this is the important first step, where it's all laid out in front of us now. And that's it. Do you have any questions?
Great. Thank you very much for that presentation. Council, questions, comments? Fred?
Yeah, I would like to know if, what could we do to, what should we do as a first project, as a reasonable cost, that would make enough impact, but, you know, we're, at this point, we're not, we don't have as much money as we'd like to have to do this, so what would you suggest?
Well, the two things that really go into the prioritization are the importance and the cost. Obviously, the higher the importance, the higher it is on the list, and the lower the cost, the higher it is on the list, because it's kinda the low-hanging fruit.
Right.
Looking at all of the projects, and again, we haven't actually done all of the prioritization, because there has to be a lot of cost estimation still to be done, but one of the most important corridors seems to be Terry Street, even if in part, that seems to be the area where focus should be in the early stages. From, I'd say, the more of the western side, from Old 41 West, there are some opportunities to improve the experience for pedestrians and bicyclists.
How does that compare to, didn't you have alternatives, were you gonna do something north and south of Terry?
I don't know how to go backwards necessarily here.
You mean all the way around Terry? Terry.
I'm gonna get the hang of this before I leave. So, let me scroll through to the... Alright, so, I'm sorry, which area are you referring to?
Well, I was, all I was trying to find out is, was there a way that we can do anything other than Terry to get the same results?
Well, I mean, when we're looking at the whole system, with bicycles and peds, things are more localized than with, you know, vehicular traffic. If, for cars, we can look at other east-west corridors, and it might be, you know, an extra couple minutes out of your way to take another route.
Right.
The emphasis on Terry Street has much more to do with what's right along Terry Street. But again, the vision is that all of the streets listed in that corridor will eventually have a much better pedestrian and bicycle feel to it. It's just, I keyed it on Terry Street, because more for the importance than the cost side of it, because it's used so much.
I guess I'll jump in here. Thanks, Fred, for getting us started, and I guess, would this be too much of a piecemeal approach, if we were to focus on the schools initially around town? If we were to look at the various schools around town and make that a top priority, or does that get too patchwork, in your mind?
No, I don't think anything is patchwork. In fact, where small missing pieces in the system are, is another, you know, those are things that also move up high in the prioritization, because if you have...
And you can visualize the schools around town in your mind?
Yeah, and again, that kinda comes back to Terry Street, because there's a school right there near Pine, as well as the rec center, so there's just a lot of, you know, pedestrian and bicycle activity in that area, but certainly, and I don't have all of the pages of the master plan here to show, but there is a page that shows all of the, we called it points of interest, but all of the schools in the city are shown on there, and the idea is to make sure that there's good access to all of those.
But, again, maybe from a cost point of view, in other words, like, if you're thinking Terry Street, do you look at it, if you do all of Terry Street, that's more cost-effective versus doing just a stretch from the school to Old 41 versus the charter school on Old 41, versus Dean Street, versus, you know?
Right, absolutely. I don't envision that, well, I mean, it could be if the money was there, but I didn't mean to say that the entire length of Terry Street needs to be done all at once. It would start where the most activity is, which would be there around, I guess it's Pine Avenue, but where the middle school is there, and radiate out from that the missing pieces. Again, that local pathway slide, where it's our understanding that a lot of children are using bicycles to ride up from as far south as Pennsylvania Avenue through the parks, but when they get to Terry Street, just crossing Terry Street is very dangerous in that area. So, just, you know, and that's a very point-specific improvement, to put a crossing in there that would be a lot of benefit for a relatively small amount of cost. And then, again, connecting up to be able to get to both the school and the rec center would be providing a lot of benefit for a relatively small amount of cost.
Sure, sure, and then I guess my follow-up to that would be, down at the beach, what are your thoughts down there? And I've looked at the map, but I haven't completely digested it, so I apologize in that regard, but down at the beach, one example is right, Doc's Beach House, where you cross, but could you elaborate on the beach and what we could do down there, maybe, quickly?
On Benita Beach Road, or when it becomes Hickory?
I would say Hickory Boulevard in the bend, but take your pick, the beach, the beach at large. Your choice.
We took a very high-level, you know, 30,000-foot approach to Benita Beach Boulevard because of the visioning study. We actually were laying low, if you will, to see what comes out of that, because we don't wanna trip over what's going on with that, so...
Why not?
Well, again, consistency, I think the last thing you guys want is three different reports saying to do three different things.
Of course.
We definitely, you know, the master plan shows the need for something, but it did not get into specifics about exactly how to do it.
Right. Okay. All right. And I'm gonna double back with you. What would you initially think down at the beach? beach? Maybe moving down, you know, where, let's just say Doc's Beach, from the public beach to Doc's Beach House?
Well, and I'm going to try and remember what I read in the Benita Beach report, because, you know, it really does all tie together, but it makes sense that where Hickory, you know, coming east, where Hickory becomes Benita Beach Road, that the cross-section of Benita Beach Road can be smaller, because there's no, there's no real addition of traffic there at the bend. So reducing, maybe, you know, going with the term, the road diet, we can free up some of the room in the right-of-way to put in the bicycle facilities that are needed in that area. Hickory Boulevard itself, and I apologize, I pull out the study, but...
But you can visualize the area?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because of, I think, the recreational nature, wherever we can get separated bike paths or trails along the roadway, that's what's ideal. I just can't, I can't remember what the right-of-way is there. And the main intent of the master plan was try to remain within the existing right-of-way. None of the, none of the facilities that we recommended require the purchase of additional right-of-way.
Okay.
Again, anything's possible. It can be expanded, and we did mention in the master plan that, we consider it to basically be a living document. Things change, you know, 10 years from now, the vision of how the pedestrian and bicycle situation should be might be different than it is today. New roads might be built, or they just, the character might change, and, you know, then the master plan should be updated to account for that. But it, right now, the master plan does not have a high emphasis on doing a lot at the Hickory Boulevard and Benita Beach Road area.
Okay, okay, great, thanks. Counsel? Amy?
I have a couple of questions. It's not clear from, I'm looking at the full report here, and you have different overlays of long-range plans, but starting with the long-range plans, it is not clear to me what is in place and not in place, and what is an enhancement?
Well, that's where the, the series of maps that comes after the long-range plan is where it's easier to see that information. There's a specific map for just sidewalks, for example.
Right.
And there's different line type that I think it shows existing and dashed and proposed and solid line. So it's a lot easier to pick up on where we're recommending for additional facilities or enhancement to facilities on those subsequent maps. The long-range plan was just meant to be, this is what it'll look like when it's all done, but the maps that follow that are the ones that show how to implement it.
So like, for your suggestion that you start on West Terry Street, what is there and what is not there? How much has to be done there?
Well, bear with me while I cheat and find that here.
Because I know you have here...
There was multiple aspects of it on West Terry. I know there was improvements to the paved shoulders, a future multi-use path, and then a sidewalk on the south side of the road also, eventually. But I mean, it's different pieces. There's a lot of little different pieces there.
So we'd have to literally enhance from Old Forty-One West, is what you're saying? Because I do see that there's like a proposed multi-use path, which is a dashed line, so that would have to be done?
Yeah, there's currently a sidewalk there that's only five foot wide, but that's where the multi-use...
Right, as I remember back to when we were putting together, we envisioned that along the north side of Terry, from, you know, again, about that Pine Avenue, all the way west to Forty-One, that there would be a separated multi-use, probably not enough room to have both a pedestrian sidewalk plus a bike facility, but a, but a separated multi-use path, at least 10 feet wide, to accommodate pedestrians and bicyclists.
All right, so now I see it. You start with an existing paved shoulder to be replaced, and then you're going to suggest putting in a separated bypass and some sidewalk work and all that stuff?
Correct.
So that's kind of a major...
That's, yes.
Are there any, like, sort of, like adding a sidewalk kind of a thing in here that would help, that is not a major renovation?
Well, the, I mean, what's there today is a sidewalk. I think there is sidewalk all along the...
I'm not talking about, I'm talking about the whole plan, are there...
The whole plan.
That is a major undertaking, what, if, because there's no, in my view, there's no point, no point in doing anything unless we do the whole banana, so to speak. But along with this entire plan, are there little pieces that we could just add on to enhance certain sections of it, which would be a less of a pressure on the capital budget?
The short answer is yes. The longer answer is, that's the next step. This, again, this is the overview, and now it's time to go and look at, well, if we're recommending, you know, five miles of new sidewalk throughout the city, where are the, where are the short pieces that would be, and, you know, that's what would be done next? How can we start turning these into projects, going from most important to least important, and least expensive to most, most expensive?
So, because I was intrigued by your connecting of the local pathways, and I don't know what that would involve to finish that part of it. I mean, what is that, what would that take? Is that like a dirt path, or what is that?
Well, the paths through the park are pretty nice the way they are, but then when you come out onto... Trying to remember the name of the street.
Riverside Drive, south and north.
It is Riverside, you're right, you're right. You come out onto Riverside, there's no, I don't believe there's any sidewalk, and there's definitely not a bike path there, so providing better linkage from the park up to Terry, crossing Terry, and then continuing up Riverside. Then there's an interesting segment of path that goes east-west over towards the rec center, and, well, actually, I think it comes in kind of between the school and the rec center. And again, school-aged children are using that, so where they're vulnerable is the north-south part there, between, between the park and that east-west segment of path.
That is a appeal to me, so I'd like to know, you know, get a more detailed commentary, not necessarily here, but some follow-up to that, to see how we could implement it and focus on that in regard to costs, and then compare it to the other, and I agree with Terry Street, and perhaps maybe some work along the Benita Beach Road, but we need, we need, as a council, to prioritize this, because we're addressing this in our meeting after this council meeting, and one of the big costs is definitely the multi-use path. And if these are projects that we're going to be doing this fiscal year or this next fiscal year, I think we need to know that.
I understand. And this, this is the planning document, and there are unit costs in there, but this plan did not take it to the level of, how much will this segment of sidewalk cost? How much will this bike lane cost, or anything like that? That's the, we begin, you know, the next step would be the engineering side of things, where, you know, we measure it out, we determine the quantities, times the unit costs, and then start, okay, where can we divide this project, that it makes sense that we can do this part first and this part second? Everything that you are talking about is dead-on, it's just, some of it is the next step.
Thank you. Thanks, Amy. Fred?
Yeah, real simple. Would, would it make sense for counsel to give you a ballpark, like a million dollars, and say, what's the best project we can do for that, for X amount of dollars? Because that right-of-way will limit what you can do.
Well, I mean, certainly, it could be, and, you know, it could be a dollar amount that's, that covers five or six projects, and one way to approach it would be, how many projects can we get done for the amount, for the amount that's available?
Right.
Pete, and then Mike, it looks like Mike.
Well, I was just going to say that the Bicycle-Pedestrian Committee is also looking at it, and they were going to kind of look at what needs to be improved, and also what, you know, what kind of prioritization should be done there. And with the West Terry thing, you can do piecemeal, like even just doing the paved shoulders would help out tremendously, give you more room for the bikes, and that would kind of alleviate from the sidewalk, because the sidewalk's only five foot wide, there's bikes, people walking their dogs, and just not enough room on there. Then there is a proposed sidewalk on the south side of the road that could eventually be built while we tear out the sidewalk on the other side. So I mean, you can do it in pieces, it doesn't have to be all done at once. And I just noticed, like, the mayor brought up along Hickory and Benita Beach Road, they do show proposed sharrows on the road there, that's bikes on the road, where I know the Benita Beach Road visioning study is actually proposing that the separated bike path go all the way down. And I think that would be more of the end result that we want. We really don't want them on the road, especially in that curve everybody's racing to get through.
There's a nuance to that, though, that I actually became aware of towards the end of our process. I think there's actually a segment of Benita Beach Road that is not in the city. And I think where we're showing sharrows, it's that segment, because we felt like we can't dictate that another jurisdiction is going to go into...
But we'll give it paint to Collier County.
Well, and that's, but that's, I believe we also, hopefully we did, because we discussed it, we put a note in there saying that the bike lane would be more desirable, but coordination with, with Collier County would be necessary to make that happen.
But I do agree with Fred that, you know, having a, like, if we knew how much each little segment would cost, so we have an idea of what can we fit in if we're going to propose doing a million dollars, that way, like, even the Bicycle-Pedestrian Committee could say, okay, well, this is really important, but it's going to be over the million, so maybe we just do the paved shoulder, and then we concentrate on this road over here, and this one, and this one instead, and then do the rest in subsequent years, so...
Thanks, Mike. Peter?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thanks for this work. As we've talked about before, if you look back at the original comprehensive plan of the city from 16 years ago, one of the most important things right up front was a system of shaded, safe bike paths. So, you know, now we have a big step here, so thank you for that. I think the other thing to say is, on the schools, I totally agree with Peter on that, and Fred had asked a question, I don't know if this is what he was getting at, but other connections besides Terry Street to get kids from Rosemary Park to school, you've mentioned in here Cochran Street and the line that's on Cochran, that's a road that can go through to Old Forty-One. It exists as a public street on the other side, have to go past the railroad and pay your fee. But there are a lot of good ideas in here, and so thank you for that. And the other thing I'd like to say is that this is a great basis for us to go forward for things like tiger grants, and you had that in the end.
Right.
And we've got a lot of great partners around, like Bike Walk Lee and others, who are anxious to help us with this, including ways to get additional funding for it. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Counsel, Greg?
I do have one other question, and like myself, I read it, but I didn't digest yet. Did you guys, do you have to go back and revamp it now that the school's going in at Shangri-La? Or we do, do we need to relook at Shangri-La as a little bit more of a, like, we talked about the schools, we know we got the middle school and the two, two or three elementary schools, and now we have the middle school, or the high school going in by August 18 or something like that? Do we need to go back and relook at that, or do you guys?
Well, we found out about that school location towards the end of our, you know, putting together this draft, and we did try to, like, we changed what we were saying about Shangri-La because of that.
Okay.
I, again, didn't memorize it, and I can't remember exactly what we said, but we did try to account for that. But I probably should have led with, this is draft, so, you know, this is our draft version of this. Still waiting for comments to come in, so, you know, if what we're showing is not deemed appropriate because of the school being there, then we're more than happy to take another look at it.
Okay. Counsel, anything else? And I guess maybe I would just add, if you perhaps want to have some kind of a town hall meeting workshop here at City Hall, or somewhere else, I'd be happy to help organize that, if that would be helpful, to, you know, for input. It may or may not, I just, I'd lob it out there, and if that's helpful, maybe we should do that.
Okay, and, you know, I mean, we're, obviously, we're working through staff. Nicole Perino is the project manager for this, and I don't think she could be here today because she's ill, but certainly I'll pass that along to her, and we're going to take our guidance from her on, you know, that level of detail, but we'd certainly be happy to do that.
Sure. Great, thank you. Carl?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate the work. I will tell you that the Bike-Ped Committee, as Councilmember Gibson had indicated, would like to prioritize some of these things. My understanding is Terry is one of them, especially from Forty, Old Forty-One to Forty-One. And then a second leg being actually from Old Forty-One to Imperial, because there's a number of bicyclists that try to get from the west all the way to Imperial, and have a difficult time doing that on Terry's. What we would like to suggest today is that counsel accept this report as it's been given today, and then give us an opportunity, and yourselves as well, to further analyze this report and give counsel, or give staff direction as to the next steps that you would like to take. I will remind counsel that there already was a public workshop where people gave input on what they thought should be the priorities. If counsel certainly, as the mayor suggested, would like to have a second one saying, okay, here's the report, do you have suggestions for priorities for counsel to look at as we move forward? We can certainly do that as well.
When the snowbirds return, perhaps?
Yeah.
Great, wonderful. So I'd make a motion to approve this, realizing that it's a draft and a work in progress?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Thanks, Trent.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Dewitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slakto?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dewitt?
Aye.
Okay, great. Moving, thank you for that, very informative, thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. Counsel, are there items that you would like to pull? Take a look at that. I guess I'd like to pull B and D, just for a quick explanation.
Move to accept the rest.
Okay, motion.
Second.
And a second to approve the balance. Roll call, please.
Councilman Slakto?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dewitt?
Aye.
Okay. If we, and I assume that's B, where it says Springs Cable Television, mine kind of got cut off there.
No, no. You consent agenda.
Yeah, okay.
B is soccer.
B is soccer. And D's?
Yeah, all right, well...
You want to rescind your...
Yeah, okay. I'm looking at my worksheet, but anyway, let's, I'm looking at...
It's on the computer. Here, here's another one.
Yeah, I see the problem now, I've got every odd page. That's okay. I'll look at the even pages, how's that?
I have it on.
There it is.
I don't think you meant to, did you want to...
Yeah, no, I did not mean to pull B and D from page three, I did not. Okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's okay, we're good now. Okay, so I would withdraw that, I apologize. Looking at pages one, three, and five doesn't get it done.
So we move to approve B and D.
Second.
Okay. Motion to approve, and there's a second? Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slakto?
Okay, great, let's see, let me focus on page two here. There we go. Now we're looking at the right stuff. Okay, mayor and councilmember items. Fred, did you have something that's not printed here? You had mentioned to me earlier?
Yeah, just very briefly, because of the, at conference of League of Cities, I will not be able to participate in the meeting at Charlotte Harbor Exuary, and they have a thing where they're selecting a new executive director, so I've asked with consensus approval counsel for former council lady Martha Simons to represent me at that meeting. She goes to all the meetings anyway, she is a member of the Stero Bay Management Group, so she's very well qualified, so she's prepared to do it if nobody objects. Okay?
Counsel, any objections?
Thank you.
No? Okay.
And thank you, Martha.
Okay. Nothing else is printed here under mayor and councilmember items, but anybody else have something?
Nope.
Okay, very good.
Hearing on this?
Okay, now we're moving on to public hearing. Audrey, would you like to address items A, please, and B?
Thank you. The first item is to consider adopting a resolution declaring city council's notice of intent to declare zoning in progress to establish enhanced regulations related to storage facility uses citywide. The resolution will be published in the next available Fort Myers news press. Counsel, this is your first time, but it's not city council's first time, but this sitting city council, and looking at doing a zoning in progress. Zoning in progresses are not moratoriums, but what they do is they place the world on development services, which is the design standards, and also some of the uses, and that's the Chapter Four zoning, related to storage facilities. I did listen to the speakers this morning. We do have a letter from Ms. Barak. I did tell Ms. Barak to submit a letter, but I did not say that, yes, you have the right, that is the domain of city council. I did put relief standards in the, in the resolution, so that if in the resolution, counsel, by, by acting such a resolution, counsel would be directing staff that we would not be continuing processing anything unless counsel either examined some, for the 180 days, unless counsel either said there's good cause or, for an application because they are either in a planned development, or principles of equitable stoppable should apply, or they're meeting our code provisions, that they are consistent with what staff intends to do, then you could say, staff, go in good faith and continue forward with it. But that is city council's decision. That is not something staff would ever say. We did receive one letter, and that is for super towers, and super towers is very unique, and I believe we can go through that. You'll also hear from Mr. Mauer, and Mr. Bachmann is a very insulated, it still needs to go through processes, but the issue is, do you want us to process it, or do you want to have a holdoff for the 180 days while we prepare the regulations? That's the council call.
Good morning. For the record, Jaclyn Gensen, I went ahead and put together an exhibit, which I would like to share with you, just to let you understand what's in progress and at what various stages. Let me know if I need to zoom in a little bit more. But really, this is Benita Beach Road. This is Interstate Seventy-Five. And the area is in yellow, and I'll show you, I'll go over each one. This is the Burnwood Park of Commerce, which Mr. Mauer represents. This is the St. James CPD, which on their zoning master concept plan actually had mini warehouse uses identified. We did have a pre-application meeting with some potential buyers last week where they were entertaining some mini warehouse uses, but also possibly some open storage, albeit would be covered, storage uses in the rear. But that's, that's where they're located. Mr. Bachmann's property is very close off of Surveyor Creek, and for certain reasons, he has to apply for a rezoning because it is an interchange commercial use, or land use designation, and to allow storage, the only way we could is for him to amend his agricultural zoning to allow for a commercial use designation that would allow him to build that building. Here we have the Oakland CPD. That is a current rezoning application that is scheduled for zoning board in September. So, they would be affected because they are requesting, at least for a certain time period, that they can have an open storage use. So, that could be a case that could be caught up in this. Again, you can exempt them out to allow them to also go through processing, and maybe we can address, our staff would address those concerns at time of zoning through conditions of approval. Here in blue, what that represents are existing planned developments where their master concept plans have expired. So, in order for them to pursue any of those entitlements that are approved part of that zoning ordinance, that master concept plan has to come back before you for approval, and at that time, we can definitely address those conditions. But I wanted to make you aware that these projects had either mini warehouse approved or they had some component of storage open. This is the Lowe's CPD. The open storage component really was to support their garden center. Here you have the Greyhound Square CPD amendment that is being processed that also is anticipated to go before September zoning board. I don't believe that their primary use of, would be affected because they're not really asking for an open storage use. It's more of a vehicle equipment dealer use and rental use. But one of their listed uses that they're requesting is for storage open. Here is the Channel Thirty site. That is the site with the 700-foot broadcast tower. They're a unique situation because there is a parcel that butts Old Forty-One, and then you have the railroad right away, and then you have the property. So, they're very isolated, so I do agree with Ms. Barak. We could possibly look at exempting them out just because of their site location. And they are adjacent to Mediterra, however, there is a substantial preserve, and then their golf course before you have residential areas. But what makes Channel Thirty very unique is they had their zoning approved in 2009. They've been working towards getting some tenants in. They filed for commercial building remodel permits to locate Kelly Roofing. There are some office uses, and then to allow for them to store some of their, their trucks, their fleet. So, the storage open component of the zoning in progress would affect them. They filed for a zoning verification letter in December, where we did verify that those uses were permitted. So, they have executed leases where Kelly Roofing is supposed to move in in October. So, they would be affected by the zoning in progress. Then we have over here the, near Okeanah Street and Benita Beach Road. There was a pending zoning application that was filed last month for a small retail building fronting Benita Beach Road, and then self-storage units in the back. They're primarily intended to be, from what I understand, self-storage condos that will have bathroom facilities in it. We're still trying to get some information from the applicant on what really is going to transpire there. But that's just to let you know, at least in this area, where some of the properties would be affected and in what stages of the process they're in. And from what I understand, these industrial parks here, that's not our intent to have them be applicable to this zoning in progress. Because those are our industrial areas.
Can I ask a question of Audrey or John or Jackie? This is the first time we've been through this, but you guys have black belts in us from St. Matthew's House. This is exactly the issue, all right? So, Florida law is very clear on what happens in zoning in process, what the rights are depending upon what happens when. What happens when is a fact determination, okay? So, I guess I, I appreciate hearing about five or 10 existing things, but couldn't we make this simple and say it's Florida law that applies with respect to this? I mean, what's so complicated about it? It's straightforward. In other words, in other words, if some, if someone, clearly if someone had been in two years ago, and they had got going, I think under Smith versus Clearwater, whatever, you'd say they're entitled. Because it sounds like what we're being invited to do here is, are we being invited to look at like five or six things and figure what's in or out? I don't think that's a very constructive path.
And, and I, that's definitely an option that the council can take. I think the reason why we're presenting these is because you do, the intent of this ordinance.
Yeah, what's the intent of the ordinance?
Exactly. So, so we were, we were looking at something.
Yeah, let's walk it back a little bit.
The discussions have varied, and that's one of the reasons why we're looking at, at the projects and where they are and their status.
Right.
Is this a simple situation where we want to control aesthetics for this type of use that's visible from, from a public right-of-way or a residence? Or is this something that we want to apply to all uses citywide regardless of their location?
That's a different issue. Right.
And, and so, based upon that discussion, or at least that line of thinking, thankfully, Jackie's better with her computer than I am, and put this together so that we can have a discussion. What are we looking to do?
John, Fred, are you the one who started this?
Yeah.
Okay. So, what are you looking to do?
I'm guilty.
Sorry?
I said I'm the guilty party.
Well, no, what are you looking to do? Enhance?
Basically, it's, we're, we're trying to upgrade the appearance of Benita Beach Road, Forty-One, Old Forty-One, the interchange.
Okay.
And, for example, some of the properties that were presented, the one I think that Amanda Barak presented, that really, it, it would not, it doesn't, there's no problem with it. I'm relatively sure that the St. James may not have a problem. I'd have to see a little more about it. But it's to make sure that things like three, three-story boat buildings, boat storage, number Forty-One.
Right.
Well, that's one of the things that's being considered here. It's another one, it's, there's a project that's going to come through that it's a open storage yard, which means it's screened, but if you have a hotel right beside it, and you're on the second or third floor, you're looking down into a stool, a tool storage area, which is not very appealing. Again, like on Benita Beach Road, there's two hotel sites down east of I-75, east, not west. And if you had these kind of things built in that area, it would certainly detract from a hotels going ahead and building there. So, it's, but it's basically to upgrade and be consistent with the vision of Benita Beach Road. And I know.
And the other roads you mentioned.
Yeah, and, and in a perfect world, I know we would like to take and go through everything in the, in our codes and do it. That would take two to three years. Right now, you can see that you have different little projects being considered and doing something now, and you're, all you're doing is upgrading the standards.
Well, does that give you the guidance you need?
Yes, sir.
In other words, he's talking about geographic areas, and then you apply Florida law.
The, the way that I am interpreting what he's saying is that if you're visible from a public right-of-way or a residence, these regulations will apply to you.
Okay.
For those areas that you are not visible.
Right.
Current standards apply.
Audrey?
Yes, thank you.
Hang tight, John. Don't go anywhere.
And I apologize for giving a little bit of a law lesson to counsel, but Smith v. Clearwater is a second DCA case. It's not law throughout the state of Florida. It is just the second DCA. It's very influential, and what this is, is it's not a moratorium, it's a zoning in progress. So, what we're doing is we're putting the world on notice that we have this. And this helps us in the event somebody wanted to file a writ of mandamus against the city for processing a permit.
Right.
So, you're giving us the direction by adoption of this resolution that we can say we can't process it for this time period. So, as I hear counsel, it would not apply for areas within the production circle and the Greyhound industrial park areas.
Right.
We could also add additional areas where it would not apply, so that's very clear. So, in other words, it would not apply to areas where there is no street access, you know, where nobody will see, well, but that's problematic. That, that's starting getting into more interpretation, and that becomes more of a problem. I can see Jackie sighing at me. The other thing I just want to point out in this is the design standard changes, and I think we have Alexis Crespo, so I might ask her to come up real quick. She has had experience in other jurisdictions with design facades and may want to, you know, depending on what council's vision is in the building design, there may be things you may want to think about first before adopting. And this is facades and, and what you explained to me about what happened in Collier County with some of the facade designs.
No, thanks, Alexis. And I just want to throw out, we've heard from two people today that have intentions of building. I guess my question would be, how are those areas currently zoned? And what are they zoned for? And what is allowed in those two areas, at least from the people we heard from today, for starters?
Can I make a point?
Sure. Of course.
We're not talking about changing zoning.
I understand, but I.
So, what we're talking about is, if you have certain uses, increasing the quality of what would have to be built to put that use. And I want to point out, I don't really, that boat storage building on Forty-One, it doesn't sit right out on Forty-One, but it's still highly visible from Forty-One.
Sure.
That's what we're talking about.
If I didn't word it exactly correctly, I apologize, but how are things, what are permitted uses in the two gentlemen that we heard from today? And when does the clock start?
Okay. For the record, Jaclyn Gensen, so, actually, there were three property owners that, that spoke today. So, first is the Burnwood Park of Commerce, and they are zoned an MPD, and that was originally approved in the mid-'90s. And it was, the master concept plan associated with that was divided up into several development areas, and depending on the development area, there is an associated schedule of uses. So, in this instance, in this specific development area, storage open and mini warehouses, listed permitted use. So, so they do have zoning to allow that use. And if they were to come in for building permit today, they would have to demonstrate consistency with that zoning resolution as amended, so all the buffer, additional buffer standards, if there are any, other, other types of screening that may be in that area. Because again, depending on where it's located, there's some buffer standards along the Hunters Ridge area. But otherwise, it's the Chapter Three standards that we will review the project against. Now, if they have additional standards, which I know the Burnwood Business Park, industrial parks do, they have a very high level of aesthetic, that is a deed restriction that we can't enforce. We can only enforce our Chapter Three standards. So, whatever Chapter Three says in terms of our prototype building design standards for mini warehouse storage, and there's two different options, those are the standards that we as staff have to use to review those, that specific application.
Okay, and have they been in to talk to the city yet?
Yes, they have.
They have?
For a pre-application meeting. They're voluntary, they're not required, like in Collier County. In Collier County, it is required before you file your local development order, they call it SDP, Site Development Permits. They do require a pre-application meeting, and it is a fee, but it does go towards your application fee once you file. So, so it's a little different, but they did have a pre-application meeting.
So, they would be reviewed under the old standards or these new proposed ones? Which I know is the question.
Yes.
Okay, well, we'll get there. Okay, but, so they have been in?
For a complimentary pre-application meeting, correct?
Complimentary. All the, all the, all the. Complimentary. I like it.
Everybody's been in.
I was going to say, everybody, every star on there has been in and talked to us prior to this.
Right. Every, every, every star that you talked about has been in.
At some level.
Whatever that means.
Yes.
At some level.
And that's what the standard is in the law. And as you know, when I was mentioning Smith versus Clearwater, I was talking about the pending ordinance doctrine, and I was using that as a shorthand. It's well-recognized in Florida, throughout the state, okay? It is, Audrey.
But some courts disapprove of it.
I understand that, but it's what we applied in St. Matthew's, and what went through, it's what the Florida Senate has talked about. I don't think you'd say it's a controversial case with two sides to it. If not, tell us what it is, and we'll go by it.
Right, and, and some of us have different risk assessments, and I may feel differently about Smith v. Clearwater than your viewpoint, and I understand.
No, that's not my point. My point is, tell us what the legal standard is, and we'll properly apply it to these people.
And this is a zoning in progress, and as you've mentioned, equitable stoppable is very fact-dependent. And that is if we actually did something that people relied to their detriment based on the actions that we went forward. So, if we cajoled people to make an application for a permit a certain way, and then we said, no, we're not going to go with that, that's a typical equitable stoppable argument.
Right.
The fact that somebody actually met with us, we were looking at the current law, or they looked at our current law, you know, that's not.
But as, but as Greg says, and I agree with Greg, every one of the, Jackie presented how many stars, everyone has said something at some time, okay? I don't believe we can, it's proper for us, we want to do the fair thing by these people, okay? At the same time, Fred, and I happen to agree with Fred, we want, I think he's saying we want look, time to look at enhanced standards, all right? So, the question is, what's fair in that context? That's a legal question based on the facts as applied.
Right.
At the same time, Fred, and I happen to agree with Fred, we want, I think he's saying, we want time to look at enhanced standards, all right? So the question is, what's fair in that context? That's a legal question based on the facts as applied.
Right.
And I honestly don't understand, I appreciate Jackie making your presentation, but are we being asked to go through each one of those stars and now figure out, well, when did they come in? When did they say what? How does that? That's what the pending ordinance doctrine is all about. So, you know, I'll just make the point again. I would appreciate if we could approve an ordinance that's normal for pending, all right, in progress. And then you properly apply the law, along with John and Jackie, as it relates to each one of the dots on the map. And it sounds like some of them are definitely, from what I've heard, but I don't know every fact, are okay.
Well, and that's where crafting the resolution, remember, I first learned of it at last city council meeting. So in crafting the resolution, I can easily put in Section 3 that it does not apply in production circle, Greyhound, industrial interchange.
Well, I don't know that, Audrey.
But that's what I need you to tell me.
What the facts are in each one of those issues?
For which ones you do not wish for it to apply.
Well, I think, John, help us out.
From my perspective, I think that you have one application, the Oakland CPD that has been filed.
Okay.
And it's scheduled for hearing September. And so, in my opinion, that is not touched by this ordinance.
And John, which star is that, just for visual aid here? Okay, thank you.
That is going to be just north of the Hampton Inn on Oakland Road, the north side of Benita Beach Road, just west of the interchange with. So that one is clearly outside of our purview.
Okay. Do you agree with that, Audrey, from a legal perspective?
And I can add it in, should not apply to Oakland CPD.
No, do you agree with that from a legal perspective?
Oh, yes. I mean, at this point, the application, they've been processing in good faith going forward.
Okay, all right, perfect.
And I think that we'll incorporate some of the discussion we have here into our review, however I think that goes forward. For the other cases, I think that the question comes, there's been, and this goes back to what I originally said. There's been some debate as to what the scope or scale of what you would like to enforce comes into play. And I think that what I've heard is we're looking to improve aesthetics along our corridors.
Okay.
And so, I think that, from what I've heard, we could be excluding those projects which are not visible from the corridors, using Channel 30 as an example, because you can drive by.
Fred, does that make sense to you?
Yeah, that one does, yeah.
However, for those projects that are visible, we will put them on notice. I think at this point, it becomes council discretion as to when something is filed, whether you would like us to present it to you saying, "Council, we have received an application. What would you like us to do with it? This is their plan. Do you think it's consistent with where you're going? Or would you like us to hold it until your modification of the ordinance is done?" That gets a little more complicated, but it does provide a little bit more process.
Thank you, John. It makes sense to me, what you suggest.
Let me lighten the mood, huh? Maybe I won't lighten the mood, but maybe we should do this more often. It seems to be an economic driver of businesses that, anyway.
I will amend the resolution that's before, if city council adopts it, I'll amend the resolution that it does not apply to the Oakland CPD, which has already been found sufficient and scheduled to public hearing. I'll also amend the resolution, it will not be applicable to the production circle and Greyhound Industrial Park areas or any area not visible from the road corridors.
How about we just look at arterial corridors at this point, and if we need to modify some language?
Yeah, Greg, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, you guys all know my comment, what it's going to be. If they've come in and talked about it, I don't think it's fair for us to move the goalposts. Well, choose Mr. Bachman. He just happened to buy something that's not visible, so his is going to get in. But had he bought on 41 thinking that he was going to do this, or on Benita Beach Road, now we're moving this goalpost right now.
Well, that, it brought a little clarification. Those that have come in to discuss this type of project with us have been put on notice during that meeting that we are looking to amend the ordinance.
Looking to. They don't, but when they, we'll use Mr. Mowers. He bought that so many years ago, and it was zoned that way, so that's his intent. So now, we're saying, you've either got to build it the way we want it, or you can't build it all, or change your whole zoning, come in for a new zoning change, whether it was open storage or closed storage. Now, we're telling him, you've got to change your whole business plan, per se, if that's what it was. And my, and I know what Councilman Forbes wants to do is the aesthetics and all that, and I agree 100%, but to, I was at the Hyatt this weekend, you know what my view was? The roof below me. So it wasn't like, if I look into a boatyard or a roof of the hotel, it's not going to deter me from putting a hotel there. I just don't like the fact that there are however many stars on there. Now, for some of these, we're changing their business plan or their business model at the stroke of a pen because we want it to look good. I agree we need to, but let's change that now from this point going forward.
Let me walk you through, just using Birdwood as an example, what I would interpret as my marching orders are, and you can determine whether this is something you're interested in. If this goes forward and is approved, as we're currently discussing, and Mr. Mauer would come in and file his application with us, I would then bring this to you with a plan and ask counsel, "Council, this application has been filed with our department. These are the plans, as they've been turned in to us. Is this consistent with the direction you're planning to go? Is this something that you are interested in allowing us to process? Or is this something you would like us to hold until your amendments are either complete or the 180 days expires?" And at that point, you can determine whether this is something that is processed and approved or something that we put on hold until that zoning in progress in some form or fashion is concluded.
All right, here's my question to you. If this ordinance wasn't here with us today, and Mr. Mauer came in with this, what would happen?
We would process the application with no questions asked, according to Chapter 3.
That's my thing. Right now, he's zoned for that. All those dots, stars, whatever you want to call it, have come in and either talked to you about it, said, "Here's our intention. What do we need to do? Here's what we want to do," and I'm sure you or Jackie have told him, "Chapter 3 is what you have to go by, blah, blah, blah." And now, because of our bidding or our will, we want to change that midstream. That's the part I disagree on.
Yeah, I have this.
Well, let's. Let's go with Fred real quick and then Pete.
Number one, if we took that approach, we'd have the big homeless megalopolis center. Because had we not done what we did, they had already filed a, actually a full application, I mean, a full application. They had floor plans, elevations, all kind of stuff. Had we not done that, you'd have that megalopolis homeless shelter sitting on Old 41. If you have an opportunity to improve things, sure, somebody's going to get caught halfway across the bridge or a quarter way across, but we're not doing anything illegal, and it's an opportunity to get things to be better. And if you allow things to go in the way they are, you're going to detract from other potential good developments that surround some of these projects.
Well, I agree and I disagree with you, Fred. That was also a health, safety, and welfare issue of the safety of our community and our schoolchildren.
Okay.
But anyway, go ahead, Pete.
No, Greg, I agree with your point, and I would just have one reflection about it, which is, that is, I guess a few reflections. I understand your basic point. I think that, in concept, the point you make is true for everyone who owns everything, whether or not they have gone and talked to Jackie or John. So you can make that point macro, all right? So the question in my mind is, what's the balance between this? People have vested rights, they have rights, and there's a hankering to, I guess, improve some standards. That's well-settled in Florida. That balance that you're talking about, you know, moving goalposts, you would call it, or adjusting zoning, or adjusting standards, that's well-settled in Florida law. So, and that's really the point. So I think it's a fair concern, but the balance is settled.
I agree with the balance, and I guess my thing is that there's those stars up there that have already done it. I'm not worried about the stars that's coming in tomorrow or the next day, because now they've been put on notice to say, "This, we are changing it."
Right.
And kind of going back to Councilman Forbes' point, you're right, Councilman, about the homeless shelter and all that. But you know what? Somewhere along the line, if you read the exemptions on Benita Beach Road, slaughterhouses there. I guess when they decided to do the use study in Benita Springs, they didn't put homeless shelter. But there are already certain exemptions already there. If we want to exempt open storage for all of Benita to make it beautiful or whatever, then we should do it for all that. If we find something that's inconsistent with what our vision is, let's change it by all means.
But then you're moving a goalpost and a guy wants to put a slaughterhouse in.
We've already done it once, but my point being is, if he's already come in and started to do it,
Yeah.
Then he's beat us to the finish line.
Fair point, but the only point I would make, Greg, is the point of start is what the Florida law is all about and what defines the rights.
Well, that's it, and I think that's up to us, is when does that clock start? In Collier County, it starts when they have the pre-meeting come in and talk.
Right, but in my view, that's well-settled by Florida law.
Which is what?
Which is, that's what we have to see. It's the facts of each case. And that's why I'm saying, how can I sit here today? Some are clearly off the table from what these guys have said, but I'm saying to myself, how can I sit here today and go through every one of those other?
Well, I agree with you. That's why I think, as a council, we make a decision right now to say, "From this point, if you haven't talked to us from this point forward..."
Well, you're saying, all right.
That's all.
Okay. Thank you, guys. I'm going to go to Audrey and then.
And I'm respectfully disagreeing with Councilmember Oflin as to Florida law. I agree with him that Smith v. Clearwater is a case that's out there that we have used, and it's a very good case to use, but also be aware that Chapter 70 was created after Smith v. Clearwater, and you have to balance that in there. I don't want to really talk about how to defend.
And that's what I'm saying, Audrey. Tell us what the law, not today, but whatever the law is, are their rights. In other words, I'm not here to say that.
Right.
All right. All I'm saying, I'm not here to say where the lines are, but it's up for you to tell us, in my view, not that there's a concern, but to tell us what the standards are.
Right.
As applied to the facts, whether it's Smith v. Clearwater, whatever it is.
Yeah, because one of the things.
Protect us from ourselves.
Thank you, Greg.
Help us help ourselves.
Yeah, so I mean, you have things like a Burt Harris-type claim, but Burt Harris, in fairness, Burt Harris only applies if you go over a year. This has the 180 days. So we don't put people in a purgatory for a long period of time. That's why 180 days is used in this resolution. So I mean, we try to do things to defend or mitigate the risks associated with taking actions like zoning in progress. I've been requested to do it. This is not our first time. The homeless shelter was not the first time we did it. Now, that was a moratorium. We did do some in 2000, even zoning in progress. So we do implement this as a tool. And it's not a horrible or terrible tool, but in order for me to understand what I need to put in it, I do need to ask council questions. So that's why I'm coming back to you and saying, "Here's what I wrote. Tell me, you know..."
So what are the questions that you want answered?
Questions is, who do we take out of the zoning in progress?
I think we'll go through that.
And some of that was fact-dependent, and the way I wrote Section 3 was, "Hey, council can tell us at a later date." Now, in this situation, because you don't have to do equitable stoppable the minute you're here doing this, but in this situation, Kelly Brothers, I believe, they've already signed all their leases and they were moving in October 1. So they need to know if they need to go somewhere else, if this is not something. So that's why Ms. Brock did rush and prepare the letter. That's why I did look at the letter. And I said, "The letter looks good." So I understand where Amanda, you know, stated her statement. That is in the province, finder of fact is the province of council. So I can give you the standard of review for equitable stoppable, which is basically that you pull the rug out of someone, you know? And that's, I mean, that's the essential element. That's actually what the case says, you know, that explains equitable stoppable. But that's why I need this direction from council, and I appreciate getting it. So if I keep repeating that I need to modify Section 3, that's so I can give council the correct answer or so the public can also be aware of what's going on. Now, also, just want to point out, and then I'll let John go. If you look in the back part after the resolution, there's the current design standards. So this is what we already have on the books related to storage facilities, as well as Chapter 4. And you'll see Chapter 4 is very sparse as to design standards. And we started playing with some of it, some of the issues like car clubs, and some of it as personal storage locations, which have been issues.
Okay, Carl, did you want to?
I did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just an observation that I think might be helpful to the council, maybe not. And that is that, and I've worked for multiple cities, and I will tell you that, in my mind, simply having a meeting with city staff does not commit the city, nor does it commit the applicant to do anything. We meet with many people who may or may not do projects. There are times when we meet with people and they decide they're not going to do the project. So really, the city does not know what the applicant absolutely wants to do or will commit to do until the application actually comes in. And that has not happened in a number of these cases. So we talk to a lot of people, but we never really know what they're going to do. The complimentary pre-advisory meeting is simply kind of an advisory meeting for them to come in, run some ideas by the city. We think it's a good thing. Our applicants, I think, like that, once they apply, because they find that helpful. The difference between Collier County and the city of Benita Springs is that those potential applicants, those people coming in for that mandatory pre-advisory, are paying money to have people from the county sit there and listen. They're making a commitment upfront, expending resources upfront to meet with the county, Collier County, where here, it is very informal, and it costs nothing other than the potential applicant and the staff's time. So I don't know that anyone's made commitments just because meetings have occurred, at least from my experience. I don't know if you agree with that, but John, but that's my experience.
We take notes. We rely upon those notes if applications go forward or future discussions take place, or if somebody else comes in to talk about the same property with the same use. We look at that as a very informal part of the process. From my perspective, I look at the filing of an application as the start of the process. We do have a lot of meetings, a lot of meetings, and a lot of discussion. But sometimes those discussions result in an application, and sometimes they don't. So, I don't know, like I said, I don't know if that helps or not, but that's.
Yeah, well, I mainly just want to say, I agree with Greg. I mean, as a businessman, I've always, since I've been up here, have been consistently against the zoning in progress. But at the same time, I also know, you know, driving down 41, I just recently made someone aware that there is a storage unit right over our border in Estero. They said they drive past that every day for years. They never even knew it was there. So I mean, having that enhanced standard does make a difference. But again, I'm against the whole 180-day thing, so I kind of agree with John, having the opportunity of having it, is it in the view shed of, along the corridor? And then if it is, you can still bring it in to council, you know? Maybe they have to wait two weeks to get before council, but, you know, 14 days, maybe 21 days at the max isn't bad. You know, it's a lot better than 180 days, so I would agree with that.
Fred, go ahead.
Well, I was going to propose, I think that in that period before they would come to council, if the staff, Alexis, Jackie, John, and I, and Audrey can have a little bit of time, like a couple of weeks, then when they come in, they would be able to have the benefit of knowing what is planned to be in this. And they would even be able to tailor-make, maybe make a few modifications to their layout or their design, or a little landscaping, and it would get approved anyway. So I think it would not, I think it would be, that's what we ought to do.
That's the intent. And I don't want to interrupt, but that's what, we would like to at least have something to judge against, informize the process a little bit.
Amy?
No, I just want to say, it's clear that we have like sort of two issues here is, when are we deemed in process? And I think you added a lot of information that way, as did Carl, and I appreciate that. So I think that we, as a council, have to agree to what in-process is, and that will be sort of the cutoff point. And I do think that those 10 or more stars in there, that they don't all would, none of, many of them would not meet my criterion that has been articulated that way. So I do think the fact that a lease was signed, that makes sense to me, but some of these other things wouldn't. So we need to clarify. That's the first point. The second point in regard to changing the goalpost in the middle, we are in a dynamic economy. Nothing is absolutely stable. So if we are not, at least, we're giving the people who are going to have applications before the city fair notice that we are considering changes, so we're actually giving them a heads-up, which I think is a positive. So even though I understand the process where if you have some dreams about your property and then suddenly you have to change them because there's some regulations, I do think we have to do what's right for the city, and focusing on the corridors aesthetically, I think, is very important. So I think we need to just clarify, this ordinance has some problems with it, and we need to work on it, that's all. But I'm in favor of it, in general, once we clean up some of these things.
Clear as mud, right?
Well, even the standards themselves, I mean, I just have a question about that. The ones at the end, are the ones that are current standards or the ones that are proposed? I mean, how do we come up with the enhanced standards? I mean, do we have a guideline to do that, or we just dream them up?
In the draft ordinance, sorry, in the zoning in progress resolution, you'll see anything that's in underline is proposed to be some new areas that we're considering. When we met with staff last week, some of the ideas were, at least for the Chapter 3 architectural standards, were to add possibly maybe additional facade criteria. Maybe storage facilities over a certain height and number of stories have to have primary facades on all four or all three sides. Or maybe they just have additional articulation, which is, it could be anything from shutters, columns, colonnades. And we would work with Sam Vincent on those additional design criteria. Because buffers are only going to address the first story mainly. So anything above two stories, we would look at some additional building facade standards. In terms of landscaping, we can definitely increase buffer widths. We have other supplemental regulations in the code where we incorporate berms with enhanced landscaping. We would also look at the siding of if there's open storage, maybe it's covered and how that covered storage looks. So we have been brainstorming in terms of what we would do for the Chapter 3 standards. Chapter 4, historically, what we have done is, if it is an approved existing plan development, we require that they have it specifically labeled on their master concept plan. And that's where some of the other, depending on your direction today, if you want to pursue that same thought process, we can do that, and that's where some of these existing plan developments would not be consistent per se because they don't, they may not have that specifically identified on the master concept plan. So that's where from the zoning part, we would like a little clarification, because it does affect. because it does affect the Burnwood property, it would affect the St. James property.
John, is there a way to exempt out certain, and then pick up on Mike's thing, which is with respect to the others, try to move in as, not the 180 days, but in as prompt a way as possible?
Right.
Yes, sir. It, it really, the short answer is yes. The longer answer is where would you like us to draw the line? Because we can, we can slice that a number of ways, depending on what you want to include and what you want to exclude.
Well, I, I like what John said earlier about if it's in the view shed of, you know, if you're on the corridor, then, you know, it should come to council and we'll make the decision on, you know, if, did they do enough architecturally? Is it going to meet the intent of what we're trying to do? And then if it's out of the view shed, then, you know, they can just move along with it.
And, and I think one more question, which adds a little bit of complexity, but I think Mr. Gens just brought this up. For plan developments where the use is included, do you want us to apply the standard that we have in the past where if the use is not shown on the master concept plan in terms of location and size, that they need to come back in or they would fall under this zoning in progress? Or is the permitted use on the schedule of uses enough for them to proceed? And this would directly apply to Burnwood.
Greg?
I just have a quick question and I apologize for not knowing. What is the view shed? How far away? If it, does it have to butt up against the road or is there like a 100 yards or?
There is, the reason why we look at, at visible from a public right-of-way is because of the, the storage building that's on US 41 just south of the river. And we had worked with them to the greatest extent possible with the rules we had in place for the facade along US 41. And even coming over the bridge, to a certain extent, screening the air conditioning units on the roof. What we did not have in place was anything that, that included other rights of way, meaning the visibility from a royal was not covered. And there was nothing that allowed us to provide additional architectural standards on the rear of the property, which was still visible from a royal and from Pennsylvania. But the regulations did not extend that far. So that's why we're looking at simply visible from a public right-of-way, they would come under this standard. So that way you wouldn't have a situation where the back of the building was visible, but the front of the building wasn't. And they would, it wouldn't apply.
So it's any public right-of-way is what we're intent?
That's, well, that's, that's the current discussion.
Audrey?
Yeah, and the reason I'm doing that is, and maybe I need to know, what is the harm we're trying to prevent by having the zoning in progress? Is it not visible from arterial road corridors? I think our design standards already address the road corridor area relatively well. Or is it the view, what the term of art being used today seems to be out of the view shed? And then I put of any residentially used property. Now, for example, and that's where you get into the interchange area. You, the view shed, you know, if you put up a building, you know, who's going to be looking at the building? You have the people on Anita Beach Road, they're going to see the building. You have the people going over I-75, they're going to be using it. And you also have the people in the communities behind the interchange area. And they're going, what are we trying to make sure the view shed is protecting as far as the visibility?
And that kind of goes to my question, and well, I hate to keep using the Burnwood, but it's right there. If it looks good from, I mean, Anita, and actually you've got the 7-Eleven, you've got the banks in front of it. To me, that parcel that he has available back there is out of the view shed because it's behind the businesses already. That's my question is how far off of the road, like we'll use Mr. Bachman's. His is behind, 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 okay, or even Channel 30 Drive, they're behind the wooded area. If they cut down that woods, now you're seeing it, that whole area. So if someone cuts down those woods now, are they going to have to change? Is Kelly Roofing going to have to move?
I think that once we make a determination on this, and that determination is made unless the facts change. So if, if you say yes or no today, I think that decision would apply regardless of whether those, that vegetation comes down unless someone were to come back to you and saying, based upon a change in facts, I think you should change your decision.
All right.
And I did, Fred, go ahead.
Well, I was going to say, going back to 41 and that boat storage, it's by Greg's definition would be out of the view shed. But guess what? It's in full view, it looks terrible. Everybody here, I think, would agree to that.
Unless you own a boat and had it stored there.
No, that's, even if you had a boat.
Inside the boat. Because in case you don't know, I think, the mayor and the deputy mayor, the one at Anita Bay, they've got three big boat storages back there that is visible from one of the highest, one of the highest priced areas of Marina Point Drive.
Right.
That's an add-on.
I jog by it every day and look at them.
All right.
Doesn't bother me, but that's one man's opinion. But in, but on a serious note, I also think there's some element of fairness here. I, I agree with Carl that I think an initial meeting, that doesn't bind us. I mean, you know, who knows? You, you, you walk into a car lot and look at a car and kick the tire, that doesn't mean you're intending to buy it, right? Maybe that's not a perfect example, but I think we know what we're saying. You come in and fill out an application and write a deposit check, submit an application, whatever you want to call it, then I think you're looking at something else. But I think without knowing at what process each one of these individual stars are at, I think there needs to be 14, 21, 30 days, whatever that might be, to, in other words, flush these applicants out, right? We can't let it go ad infinitum, we can't let it go forever. We can't say, okay, just because you've come in for an initial meeting, you have forever to figure this out. I think we need to give it a reasonable time. And I'm, literally, I'm thinking 30 days or less is a reasonable time. Come in, make your application, do what it is that you need to do, show us your serious intent. And then let's move forward because I agree with enhanced standards. We all want things to look better, but in fairness to the people that are at various stages, I don't think we can go case by case by case by case and figure out, because every, they're all different situations.
We, we are getting to, to an increased level of complexity. And, and I think that if the council decides to go on that option, that is definitely a path that you can take. You could also state that you would like to go ahead with the zoning in progress. If you want to exclude, I think, I don't think there's been much debate that the Channel 30 property and Mr. Bachman's property, due to their location, we can't go through without waiting for this, this resolution to take place. Other properties, if they were to file an application, we can bring before you and you can determine on those case by case, whether, when you see their plans, whether they should go forward or not.
That sounds good to me.
Well, the only question is, is if there's already exempt, what's it matter if we wait? If we're saying right now Channel 30 and Mr. Bachman's is exempt, we're going to, we're going to carve them out already, then why can't we do what the mayor's saying and give the other stars a time period to either put up? Or shut up? Or shut up?
Either buy the car or move on.
That depends on your perspective and the intent of the ordinance.
And my only thing to what the mayor said, I would just say, hey, we were looking at 180 days, so why couldn't we use the same criteria, 180 days for them to? Because if someone may have to go out and get investors to, if they want to move forward with this quicker than they had initially intended to. So I, I would just say the 100, I would go with the 180 days instead of the 30, like, like you had mentioned, Mr. Mayor.
I, I just have one, one question, and that's with the master concept plan. And, and I, I did read the ordinance, but I, with all this discussion, I might have it somewhat confused. We had, I think, a criterion where if, if they went through some kind of a planning process that they could moderate this ordinance. And there was, I think, a, a feature that said existing facilities or something about existing, already existing proj- plants. So in this point of view, from what I understand from a master concept, they tell you sort of a general view of what's happening. And I think you mentioned a couple of times that if they didn't specifically say, I want to put storage facilities within this master concept plan, you're asking us if that, that should apply to this because otherwise it would not. Is that correct?
It doesn't have to. And, and the reason why I brought it up for discussion was because it really goes back to where do you want to, to divide or put that line in the sand? In the past, the city has used that determination that if a use was not specified as to location and size on a plan, it was therefore not excluded from a zoning in progress. Meaning that they would have to follow those, those new rules. That does not mean that the council has to follow that same decision this time or in the future. But it is, it is an area that you can determine.
But we don't have to include that issue in, in the ordinance? We could still be flexible about that.
Correct, that's your choice.
And, and the point that was made about the potential storage facility in the Burnwood, have they, where are we in that process? I do, I've forgotten already. Do they, they have, they have a lease, they already have a lease on it?
I don't know where they are in terms of property lease or transfer. I know that they've had a discussion with us. They have not filed an application to my knowledge.
They haven't filed an application, okay.
But I know that the.
So then it would follow what the mayor has said in the process? Okay, thank you.
Can I make a suggestion, Greg, I don't know what you think of this, which is exempt out, Greg and everybody, I'm sorry. But Greg's the primary point here. Exempt out the two and then go with what the ordinance is. But within the next 30 days, if people come in and they make a showing that they're more like the two, then exempt them out as well. Just to get off this thing.
Well, it.
That's a good point, Fred?
Well, I'm, I'm, that 30-day thing, it should be, because now we're getting to ones that do show could vastly affect an adjoining property's potential development like that 18-acre wood site between I-75 that wants to put a hotel and some other thing. Those should come in in 30 days, we should look at it. If they've got good screening and a nice facade, no problem. And if not, they're going to have to follow the, the exact standards we come up with. So I mean, that, I think that, but no 180 days because all you're going to do is cause all kind of people that have nothing to run in here with something to get in under the wire. So that, I mean, that's, you don't want to do that either.
I'm just trying to get out of this.
Yes, don't mind.
I understand, I understand. Council?
Find some middle ground.
I make a motion that we move forward with this with the following. We exempt the Brockman, that's what she talked about, that industrial park. And the other cases of anything that, where somebody has been in already for a pre-app meeting of some type, they've got to be in with, within 30 days. From now, I could go with 45 days if you want to make it, that gives them a little more time so the city council can look at it and approve it, if it's exempted or not.
And I, and I just want to go through that quickly, they have to have already been in.
Okay, so just to, to parrot back what I think I heard. If you've been in for a pre-app meeting, we process you under the current regulations. If you come in from now going for the next 45 days, the plan is presented to you.
No, 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 no. The initial, the initial free consultation, whatever you want to call it, if they've been through the doors and said hello, John Dolmer, here is what we're thinking about. If they've been in and we know whether they've been in or they haven't, the stars indicate they've been in, correct?
At some point in time in the past?
I, I understand, but I did, it's important for people, if we're going to pass this, to realize they can't come in this afternoon or tomorrow or the next day.
Right.
This does not apply.
Are we applying, for those meetings and those projects that you're talking about, are they under the current regulations? Or are they being presented to council?
No, they're going to come in with whatever they're proposing. And if I were them and they're just on the current regulations and it's in, you can see it from some of these locations, I would buck it up if they want my vote, not.
He wants it to come to council.
Okay.
And, and I think he's exempting Channel 30 and Bachman.
All right, so the way, and I'm sorry I keep asking you guys, and if I seem repetitive, it's just I want to make sure I get this language right. So I'm going to have it numbered because numbering makes it easier for me to understand. So you have to follow the 180 days unless, one, it's located within the production circle and Greyhound Park industrial areas. And I think that takes care of some.
Well, no, it's the two items that we talked about.
Hold on, wait, let me go through my.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. Two, not visible from the arterial road corridors, out of the view shed of any residentially used properties. And that's the Bachman, oh, the Bachman's residence.
Well, just, you keep going.
Okay. Three, have already been found sufficient and scheduled for public hearings, that's Oakland Park CPD. Four is going to be, I don't have it written out yet, whether they have applied or they have gone through the pre-application process. And city council can review the plans and determine whether it meets the intent and objectives of potential design standards. And number five will be the catch-all, which is if council determines the principles of equitable stoppall should apply to a specific application.
Can I try it a different way? All right. Which is specifically naming the two, not generic because that can bring in other people that we don't know about that aren't even here. All right. So exempt out whatever we agreed to exempt out, this Channel 30 and I guess Bob's thing. Then it's as, it's 180, it's 180 days. But in the interest of fairness to the other dots on the map, if within the next 30 days, if they want to take more time, it's fine by them, I guess. You know, if they come in and they make a compelling presentation to you guys and to Audrey that they're similar to the two dots in terms of this kind of equitable stoppall and whatever Florida law is, they'd be exempt.
Well, come to council.
And then we, all right, then come to council.
So I was going to say, it's your determination as to whether they're exempt or not.
So I make a motion of that, so just to get us off the dime here.
Well, and, and with the Channel 30 and Bachman, the Greyhound Square, the industrial park. Because, because that's what staff's recommending, because you don't want to hold the industrial park to it.
But they must have, they must have had the meeting, a pre-app meeting prior to today.
Yeah, there's some, there's one of the dots in there, Mike?
Well, yeah, yeah, any of those had to have a, and the pre-app meeting had to apply to what they're coming through to show us.
And, and I don't know procedurally here, Fred had started to make an, was making an original motion. Do you want to withdraw that or do you want to?
No, I can withdraw it. I, I would urge Councilman O'Flynn to slightly modify his. And instead of saying they can come in forever, 60 days, even make it 90, but don't.
I follow you, just so we'll be done with it.
Yeah.
Fine, okay.
Okay, so let's, let's go, let's rewind just slightly and make the motion, Fred or Peter. But Fred had started to make the motion, do you want to withdraw it? Okay, that's withdrawn, Peter, go ahead.
I made it, John, you got it? You have what I said?
We've exempted the properties we've discussed, Channel 30, Mr. Bachman, Oakland CPD. We have exempted the, the industrial park areas. And within 60 days, hold on, within 60 days, if someone files an application, it is then reviewed by council to determine whether they go forward or not.
Only the ones that are.
No, they had, but they had to have had a pre-app meeting with you.
I meant to, to disclaimer that, yes.
It's reviewed by council with respect to those who have done something to merit a dot on the map.
Correct, I'm sorry, I should have.
Thank you, that's my motion.
So we are adding in the Greyhound Park and Production Circle.
Yes.
That's what John said, I just want to make that clear, otherwise that would be completely right.
Okay, there's been a motion. Are we clear on what the motion is just for, okay, very good. Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been seconded, further discussion? Council, yeah, Greg, go ahead.
Just last one.
Public hearing, public, public gets.
Okay, okay.
Well, my one question is, is we talked about the main corridors. Is it just the main corridors or is it all corridors now?
At this particular point, we're looking at arterial corridors is what the motion is, is being proposed. And at this point, I think that we're probably in good shape with that. Just know that because there's been just a little bit of discussion on this topic, whatever comes in, we will be probably extra cautious in what gets presented to you. So that way we make sure that as we go along, we keep calibrating this down so that everybody's on the same page.
Well, I guess that goes back to my original question, how far is the setback on, on an arterial corridor?
Well, I think the reason, there is not one, but the reason why there isn't one is because it's a lot easier to determine whether something is visible or not visible than to state, you have a 750-foot setback because somebody places the building 751 feet away from the roadway. So a visibility standard is probably easier to achieve your intent than a distance requirement. But if we'd like to talk more about that, we can.
Fred?
Well, I, John, you, on two or three times you've said also visible for residents.
Yes, and Audrey had read that back to you as part of the.
Right.
You want that, right?
Yes.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
But I think, I think distance is a function of how tall. I mean, something's very low, you don't see it near as far in as you do that something's tall, you know?
Okay, but Audrey, you, okay, we've had a motion, we've had a second, further discussion by council.
And public comment.
But now it's time for public comment, just going through the motions deliberately. Public comment on this item. As one that lives in that area, Mr. Fitzgerald.
This item includes everything in the whole world.
I am addressing this zoning in progress change, I think, that covers shielding, separation, visibility of properties. And later enforcement of this. And my point of later enforcement is a property on Benita Grande Road, which is Benita Springs Fire Department, which has changed their operation. They were, they had a training ground, and now they have a commercial occupation, a commercial occupancy back there, school. They have changed the visual appearance of that. And I brought this to the attention of the fire department a year ago. And they said they don't have any money, I think, anyway. But presently, that's not true. Presently, we have burned-out vehicles, we have a propane tank, we have old cars, we have dismantled cars, and we have a bad vision on Benita Grande Road. It shouldn't be there, especially in the commercial, public entity, the fire department or the city. Fire department built a firehouse on Mango Drive some years ago. And they built a wall and tied the whole length of the place to protect the one occupant that was next to them. So, I think, I don't know how to end this. I think that if you put zoning in, there should be some way of enforcing it forever. I think they've changed the zoning for that fire station by bringing in a commercial occupant. They used to have training, a one-day training, and it might be a truck or something. But once they made it commercial, now you have trucks that must be there all the time, because they're gonna be used all the time. But the appearance of that street is terrible. I pass it every day. It's getting to be a major intersection, Benita Grande Road. And don't pass this, whatever you wanna call it, this change without having an enforcement policy in it. And the first person you should enforce is the Benita Fire Department. And I think you have a disgrace on that street. It's brought to their attention, not by me, but by residents of Worthington Country Club, who brought to me to bring to the fire station. Okay, thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Other members of the public? Michael?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask Audrey a quick question.
State your name for the record.
Michael Mauer.
Yeah, thank you.
Representing the Burnwood Properties and also the Johnson Development Group that has four acres under contract, there is a contract with deposits since June. How can the city justify exempting those two industrial parks and not both Burnwood Parks? When the Burnwood Parks, by their nature and their list of permitted uses, have every single use that's allowed in those parks? The Burnwood Parks are, for all intents purposes, industrial parks. There's not a, there's not a use in, in those parks that's not allowed in the Burnwood Parks. Second, the Greyhound Park backs up to Meditera, and Production Circle is within fifty feet of US-41, okay? When Burnwood went through their zoning back in the nineties, the industrial uses were pushed away from the road into certain land development areas. There are setback requirements, there are height requirements, there's design review, there's architectural review, there's landscape buffers. We already have these mechanisms in place that are more restrictive than those two parks. So why are we being penalized with respect to those two parks? I would almost argue that we should be exempted before them. Second, with regards to buffers and views and height and, and, and being an eyesore, the Burnwood Park of Commerce specifically has a six-foot perimeter berm with grass and trees. We have a thirteen-acre lake that separates Hunter's Ridge from our park with an eight-foot wall and over two hundred palm trees. I'd like to point out that the acreage that's vacant there behind the gas station that, that everybody knows about, okay, that is zoned for industrial uses. So no matter what goes on the eighteen acres next to it, if it's gonna be a hotel or an, whatever Nashman's trying to do at that site, they're going to be looking at industrial uses back there, okay? The hotel that's under contract at the two-point-eight acre Hard Corner does not abut this mini-storage site, okay? Behind the hotel's still vacant. The hotel knows that we're under contract for a mini-storage facility. Further, if you're in the hotel, you're gonna be able, you're gonna be looking at I-75, you're gonna be looking at City Mattress, the roof of City Mattress, you're gonna be looking at a gas station next door. I don't think the view from the hotel should be a deciding factor. The other item that I kinda got was, one of the exemptions is this, the CPD that's in process, correct? The Oakland CPD. So they're asking for zoning. We're already zoned. We've already been approved. We've already been told where we can and cannot put industrial uses. We've already been told where we can and cannot put mini-storage. We've already been told what it's gotta look like, where it's gotta be landscaped, what the height restrictions are. Our protections are already in place. And if you're gonna exempt those two, those two industrial areas, I don't see how you can exempt the Burnwood Parks. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can answer?
Audrey, go ahead.
And it's very simple. In the nineteen nineties, and, and councils changed, as well as planners changed. So in the nineteen nineties, when an industrial park, when Burnwood received its zoning, they received their schedule of uses from the prior conventional category. And so every use in the book was listed on their schedule of uses. Some of those schedule of uses would not be compatible with other schedule of uses. And it was a different philosophy. It was during the years of the Bubble Plan, which Jackie can elaborate if you wanna talk more. But it was not designed as a PD where there was a specificity of what was going there for council to look at. And that's why design standards is so much more complicated than the zoning area, because trying to make sure they can handle all that in a design. Because like I said earlier, it's a ministerial function when they're doing the design standards. And, and staff does not want a situation where we're accused of being arbitrary and capricious on any decision-making. Now, council did put a relief valve in here for Mr. Mauer, that if Mr. Mauer can provide counsel, and I didn't put Mr. Mauer, I just said applicant, can provide counsel with design plans sufficient within sixty days to show that the designs are consistent with the intent of the changes, it can then be processed. So, he does have a route towards processing. He could try the equitable estoppel, but I don't think it meets that criteria. And let me just talk equitable estoppel for one second, pulling up some old advice I gave council. I quoted a case called Castro versus Miami Dade County, and I can provide it to council. But it's very clear that you're not supposed to use the doctrine of equitable estoppel against the government, except under exceptional circumstances. It's usually the government discretionary, because government may feel sympathetic for somebody. But the elements, the three elements to meet it, it's not something the courts should be applying against the government. You guys have that right, you have that ability to do so. And you guys, I put it in the, you guys, sorry, city council. In the next sixty days, if applicants want to go forward, we'll schedule it to council. And we have done that in the past, which will give you the standard of review. And then you guys judge the facts.
Thank you. And I'd like to hear from Jackie or Audrey to Mr. Mauer's point about automatically exempting the two, but not the balance. And I guess my argument would be, we should exempt none, but allow everything else that's been made in the motion, in fairness to everybody.
The reason why the two industrial parks were exempt is, right now, under Chapter Three, we have certain, we have what we call applicability standards. And those industrial parks right now are not held to the commercial design standards in that code because of where they're located. And that's in terms of they're not on arterial or collector. Sorry, Audrey. So that is why we exempted them out, because the commercial design standards, by definition of Chapter Three, don't apply to them.
And Burnwood is?
Burnwood, well, I'd have to read their specific conditions, but they don't have an arterial. I had to check on the classification of Hunter's Ridge Boulevard to see if that would apply.
That's City Street.
And then the other roads.
No, but I'm just making it clear for people to understand the difference.
Correct. It, and let me, let me pull the design standards, actually, they're right in front of me.
Thank you. It's, it's an important point to, for people to understand the difference. And if there's, we're not clear in what the difference is, we need to rethink our motion.
The applicability standards are not in here.
I can go to Chapter Three if you want. Okay. Give it a second.
Appreciate it. John?
Like I said before-
You got, you're a sixty-second commercial, go ahead.
We can make this as complicated as you would like. I don't have a problem if everybody is included in this and, and applications that have started the process are then presented to you for your determination. We, the reason why we started going down this path was just an effort to, to provide a little additional fairness for, for those that have had conversations to do certain things. But it is not necessary or required that you exempt anyone.
Well, and that, that's my point, is if we're gonna exempt two, we need to be absolutely clear at this point what the difference is from not exempting the others.
The only, the only case that I, that I would exempt, and I don't even really consider it an exemption, is the Oakland CPDs, because they're scheduled for a hearing. And they are zoned, and they are coming back in, 'cause their master concept plan has expired. If they were not this far along in the process, I would never specifically state them. The others, we've had a lengthy discussion. I'm not exactly sure how long we've gone on now. But as to who, who should be exempt and who shouldn't, and why. With every exemption, you take away whatever improvement you're hoping for with the changed ordinance. So if three facilities come through that you have exempted, that are exempt from this zoning in progress, they're allowed to go through under current standards, those are gonna be three facilities that do not benefit from your modification. We've tried to look at areas where if you were gonna have that situation exist, they would not directly impact the general public, meaning they would not be visible from residents or from the right-of-way, or maybe they've gone far enough along in the process. That's not necessary. We can bring everybody back in. And you can state that, that if you want to file your application during this, this period of time, you can, you can, and that we as staff will present it to you for your determination and determine whether it goes along the lines of, of what you're wanting to do to modify this ordinance. If, you know, I'm not gonna provide additional options at this point.
Thank you, John, thank you. Jackie and Audrey?
I did have a chance to review the code. So, the Chapter Three standards, which are, for our commercial design standards, have the applicability criteria, and where they apply is any non-residential portion of a planned development. So Burnwood Park of Commerce is an MPD, mixed-use planned development. And those, these areas are considered non-residential uses of that planned development. So our Chapter Three design standards would apply. For the bits, for the industrial parks, the applicability standard is industrial districts that are not located on collector or arterials are not subject to our commercial design standards. So that is why they would be exempt. They're exempt from our current code as it is. The Oakland CPD's a little different, 'cause it, it is a commercial planned development. So it is technically a planned development where the non-residential standards would apply, but they're not located on an arterial or collector. Channel Thirty Drive goes across the railroad tracks. So, there's a question whether or not they're really subject to those rules as well.
I, I think if there's any ambiguity, and it sounds like there could be some, we can't automatically exempt two without exempting the others. Or we exempt none and go forward with the balance of the motion. One, one person's opinion. Counsel, is there any other discussion to people?
But the only other thing I'm, I'm thinking of now is, I'm agreeing with Greg that, why just the sixty days? 'Cause if we are limiting it to just people that have already come in are the ones that are allowed to come back to council, it should be for the full one-eighty. Because, like you said, they may not be ready in sixty days, they may be ready in sixty-five.
I'm okay with that.
So as long as they've already been, you know, they're part of this group, they should be able to come back the whole one-hundred and eighty.
I know you wanna wrap this up, but I think if I, if I understood what Jackie said, and there's a lot of complexity in all this, is that the industrial park is not subject to commercial design standards anyway. Is that true? Whereas the Burnwood is.
Correct.
So there is a difference between, there is no ambiguity in my, from my view. So I think we could leave that in. And, and I don't think that we're being unfair to one person, one entity versus the other. But that's my opinion.
I agree with that.
So do we wanna vote on the original motion?
Public finish?
Oh, yeah, that's a good point. Any more, any, from the public? Further comment from the public? Yes, ma'am.
I don't wanna take any more of your time, I know.
No, no, don't you worry, this is an important issue.
There's been a lot of motions, and I've been taking a lot of notes. Are we exempting out anything that's not viewable from a resident? How is it currently written?
I have Channel Thirty CPD and the Brockman Interchange Parcel and Oakland CPD specifically mentioned as exemptions.
Okay.
So for that purpose of that client, you're okay. Then I also have, will not be processed or approved with the exception of any property located within the Production Circle Industrial Park and Greyhound Industrial Park. And then the third prong would be any storage facility not visible from the arterial road corridors. And then I put in perenses, out of the view shed of any residentially used properties. Or the number four-one, and I, right now I deleted the sixty days, so, or applicants who have had a pre-application meeting may make application to city council to determine if the principles of equitable estoppel should apply to a specific application, or the applicant can provide counsel with design plans sufficient to show that the designs are consistent with the intent of the changes.
Is your residence thing an or or an and? And let me just phrase it this way. The question Fred asked about the storage unit below the Imperial River is not within view of a residence, that should be covered, something like that.
And I have it, I don't have-
It should be an or, or in view of a, I, I thought when you were suggesting before it was an or, and that it has to be.
I actually have it as a perenses.
Right, but the way you, the way you-
It's being corrected.
Okay.
I appreciate it, thank you.
All right.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead, and now you're-
Yes, thank you. And I know that there's still discussion on the motion. But again, our, our immediate urgency is just this lease that we have in place. There is the active LDO that we have on the site as well. So we are well within that process, and we just wanna be sure that we're not jeopardizing what we've done for that tenant. So again, we appreciate your time, and I know it's been a long conversation, so, thank you.
It's important, it's important stuff. We all signed up for this. And there was no stopwatch on when we ran, and how, how long discussions would go. Yeah, right.
Ran for it, too.
Yeah, that's right. We ran for this, absolutely. In fact, we can bring in pillows and dinner if we need to. Fred, did you have another comment?
Well, I think we're gonna have the new standards in place well within a hundred and eighty days. So I, I don't see why, maybe make it ninety days, but they're, they're not gonna finish, they're not gonna submit to finished construction drawings. What they're gonna do is give you a site plan, elevation, show where landscaping goes, talk about what the planning is and all that. And from that, you can determine what you, whether it's either yea or nay. And they probably, I would think, would consult with Mr. Dolmer and Jackie and Alexis and find out what some of the new things are gonna be in this and try and put some of those things in. If I were them, I would.
If I may, ninety days, we think, is staff is too aggressive. Reason being, 'cause we do have public notification processes that we have to abide by. It has to go before the local planning agency. So we do think ninety days is aggressive. I mean, again, you can extend it, but I just, I think it's aggressive.
Okay. Do we wanna vote on the motion? Do we wanna withdraw the motion? Do we wanna amend the motion?
I, I would like it amended for the, so they could come in and come to us for the full one-eighty, if the motion are-
The full one-eighty, and I would stick to the point of not automatically exempt the two, but-
Except all, is that what you're saying? No, no.
No.
No, 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 no.
The reverse. Just, I don't think we can arbitrarily, at this moment, automatically exempt the two without exempting the others. So I would say we exempt zero and keep it at a hundred and eighty days.
I can live with a hundred and eighty if, if, if Councilman of Flynn wants to amend his motion.
Mike, that's what you want?
Yeah, yeah, I think if they can come back for the full one-eighty, it's just fair to the applicants.
Okay. I amend my motion.
I'm against what Mayor Simmons said. I know you are, but that's, that's okay.
Well, I mean, are you making an amendment?
No, I, no, I'm not making the motion.
Okay, that's all.
So I would amend my motion for what he wants.
Okay, so I took out the one-eighty days.
No, he wants-
No, no, they can, instead of it was originally thirty and then sixty.
Right, they can go at any time during the-
Now, yeah, within the one-eighty, they can come to us.
What I did is I took out a time restriction. Before, I had applicants had sixty days to go forward. Now they don't have the sixty day.
But they have to have them by a hundred and eighty, one-eighty.
Now, remember, the resolution section, I believe it's Section Two, Section One, specifically says that this resolution stays in effect for one-eighty days or until you actually adopt the ordinance. So there's a chance that it won't even be in effect the one-eighty. And then I also contemplated extensions, if you need extensions. And, and you're keeping it at one-eighty, not ninety, correct?
Yeah, one-eighty.
What about the two exemptions? What about the two exemptions?
Right now I have about five, four different or five different exemptions.
Which two are you referring to, Peter? The industrial parks?
I thought the motion was the two.
No, no, the motion, my motion only related to what Mike had asked for, which was to go to 180.
Right, that was the amendment to the motion. His original motion and the language of that I draft, I have over here, and what I understand, so I just want to read it one more time. So the people that are exceptions for the processing or approving will be Channel 30 CPD, that's Bachman Interchange Parcel because it's in the woods, Oakland CPD, which is scheduled for a hearing, storage facilities located within Production Circle Industrial Park and Greyhound Park industrial areas.
That's what I understand, John, is that right?
Right, storage facilities that are not visible from the arterial road corridors or are out of the view shed of any residentially-used property.
Well, and there it's an and, the way you've written it. In other words, if a residence can see, if a resident can see it, and/or it's in the view shed, it's covered.
So it's just, yeah, and/or?
Right, yeah, okay.
Right, so it's an or.
Right.
Sorry, Audrey.
This is very complicated for me, too. Applicants who have had a pre-application meeting where storage facilities were discussed, you know, may make an application to city council to determine if the principles of equitable stoppall should apply, or, so we have another or in this, the applicant can provide city council with design plans sufficient to show the designs are consistent with the intent of the changes. So if somebody comes in and shows these beautiful facades and this beautiful buffer and everything looks beautiful to council, it's beautiful to staff.
Thank you very much.
Fred, did you have another comment?
No, I don't want to clutter.
Okay. There's been a motion, there's been a second, is there further discussion by council? Any discussion by the public? Or comment by the public?
I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly. We're not going to be exempt, but if we do apply within the 90 or 180 days, so long as we follow the rules that are in place now?
No.
Okay, so you're basically not exempting.
We are allowing you a window of opportunity to present plans to city council that show that if this building, the storage facility, meets the intent and objectives of proposed changes, which you can talk to our planners about what they propose to change in Chapter III design standards.
Right.
If it looks great, staff thinks it looks great, the application comes to council and council says, yes, staff, please process this application, and you can be processed within that time period.
Got it, so, but we don't know what the standards are, it's just a matter of discretion of the council?
You may be creating some of them.
Got it, okay, I got it, I got it, it's 180, got it.
And I just want to, oh, Alex, please come forward, hello?
Yes, I just happened to-
Former Councilman Alex Grant, folks, for the record.
I just happened to own the Bud's Away Building, that zoned industrial general for my pest control business. Am I involved in this? I mean, this was done in 1980.
But he would be if he used that building right now.
Okay, thank you.
He would be if he wanted to change it.
Yeah, you would be, Alex, if you wanted to rebuild or change, which-
Okay.
Members of the public? And I just want, okay, and before we vote, seeing nobody else from the public, before we vote, I just want to be clear that there's no ambiguity in the folks that we're exempting.
And what exactly needs to be done? Is a development order application need to be filed? Does a building permit application need to be filed? What is the process? What is, what is going to be the stamp?
The applications that are needed to build the project will be needed to be submitted. And that's going to, and the reason why I'm not saying a specific application is going to be, each of these are going to be in a different position. So if a development order and a building permit need to be filed, then both of those applications need to be filed. If a development order has already been approved, then the building permit would then be required. So whatever applications are needed to get the property from its current state to constructing at this facility, those would need to be submitted to us, to be submitted to you for approval.
And I just want to, thanks Jackie.
So for Mr. Mauer's situation, he would need to apply for a local development order application, which is, there's a $5,000 application fee plus how many acres. So there is a cost, and then he has engineering plans, which I'm sure is probably part of his concern, is there is a substantial cost when they file an application. So I think his concern is with it being left open to council, the amount of cost they have to go into preparing the application. But in order to bring that to you guys for review, I think you'd be most interested in the architectural drawings and elevations and also the landscape plans.
And you guys will give them direction on what we're looking for architecturally?
We have a draft, and I'm not planning on bringing in grading plans for you to review. I don't think that's going to be something you're looking at. I think Jackie nailed it right on the head. You want to see the architectural plans, you want to see the landscape plans, and generally a site plan. And I'm assuming that we don't need, you don't need additional information above and beyond that.
Fred?
Well, clarifying, we don't need to see the interior architectural plan. We need the site plan, the elevations, landscape and that, because you don't want to look at room layouts and things like that.
Correct, you're not concerned about the HVAC plants.
And I just want to ask one more time. There's no ambiguity or different application of current standards with the folks we're exempting versus who we're not exempting at this time?
As I understand it right now, we are crystal clear. If there are any questions that come up, I'll be more than happy to continue this discussion at a later date.
Okay, and Jackie and Audrey, you would head nod to that? Okay. Sorry to beat it to death, but I felt like it needed to be, okay? Any more discussion, council? Any more discussion, public? Holding that thought, okay, roll call, please.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
No.
Councilman Slackta?
No.
Mayor Simmons?
No.
Motion passes?
Through 4 to 3. Okay, the next item is another zoning in progress. That was fun, ready for another one. This is to consider separation distance requirements related to specific high-intensity uses citywide. Again, we talked about zoning in progress. It is not a moratorium, but it does allow us some breathing room and time to be able to go forward and consider certain high-intense uses and whether to have a separation. And it tries to keep the proliferation of these uses to have a separation with each, from it. You'll notice in the resolution, there's items that are in a box. It's because I probably needed further direction, did not receive that direction at time of having to prepare the resolution as to whether or not it should apply to convenience food, beverage stores, and fast food restaurants. That's council's call, I need you to give me that direction. On this one also, you'll notice Section 3, which would allow staff to have some limited processing of the high-intensity uses during the 180-day period. And what I did is I put a 500-foot separation. And if you look at, in the back, you'll see the draft ordinance where we actually have separation requirements, and the underlined are some proposed changes of where to go forward and some suggestions. You'll notice that the high-intensity uses, as far as setbacks, and this is separation, which is different than setback, is 660 feet. So staff discussed, and we determined 500 feet from a separation for a restaurant to restaurant or a gasoline station to a gasoline station, or a car wash to a car wash, would be about the most appropriate as far as how much a distance that you would separate these. So if an application is received and there is more than 500 feet from another high-intense use, staff would be able to continue the process. Same thing if staff has obtained a PD, or an applicant has obtained a PD or special exception through a hearing process, and there were reasonable separation requirements as a condition of approval. Or the applicant, applicant through a petition requests council to determine whether to apply equitable stoppall. We have that, we talked about that previously. Or another exception is if, oh, I'm sorry, that's not another exception. Community development will not process any applications under conventional. So if somebody coming in will see one zoning, no, it's not going to happen. So during the interim of the 180 days.
Okay, John?
I'm just here for any questions, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, very, very good. Counsel, Fred?
Well, number one, there, this would not, we don't have the same number of stars flying around on this one, do we?
It depends on how wide you want to cast this net. A narrow cast, we are more narrowly defined, yes.
Right, yeah. And so that, so that part of the discussion shouldn't be as intense. It's the same thing. If you're not careful, you're going to have a lot of the major intersections and some lesser intersections on your major thoroughfares dotted with high-intensity uses. And if you happen to be more from my era, I grew up in a town that had a gas station on almost every corner in the immediate downtown area, and then what happened as times went on, they went out of business. And they were boarded up for a while, and then they got converted to a garage. And then eventually, eventually, at some point down the road, then a, someone went in and bought them up, bought the adjoining lot and put something more productive. So part of this is to eliminate that and also not to litter the landscape with the same kind of things, just boom, 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 boom. And it's not, I don't think it's near, it shouldn't be nearly as intense a discussion, but maybe it will be, I don't know.
I have a question. On the green sheet in the front, it says 1,000 feet.
It should be changed at 500 feet.
500 feet.
Right, again, when drafting this, we started with one number, and we, staff felt that 500 feet was more defensible. The other thing that was interesting during the research of this was the Centers for Disease Control. They actually are trying to encourage local governments to use zoning powers to put separation requirements of restaurants, specifically fast food, from other uses, whether it's parks, schools, to try to reduce reliance on, because it's so convenient, especially if you live in a food desert, to go, to go to a fast food place. So they actually have bulletins out, similar to what they might provide guidance to doctors. They have a bulletin out for local governments, and I have a copy in my office if anybody wants to see it, to try to reduce, you know, use your zoning powers to reduce reliance on that type of food.
I had a couple other questions. Here on the green sheet, you say citywide, is that what we're, is that, I thought we were just doing it sort of along the arterials again, is this?
That, from a practical standpoint, it will just be along the arterials because that's really where you're looking at these uses, looking to go. It says citywide, but you're not going to find too many gas stations on, in neighborhoods, just because of zoning designations.
Audrey, I think we need one, I think we need a, an exception unless we've already got it built in. If you had a shopping center, I think it's, I don't have a problem if that 500 feet between two fast foods and a shopping center that's in a contiguous building. I'm not talking about out parcels, I'm talking about, like if you take the main part of Burnwood where Publix is in it, but there's two or three restaurants, a couple of fast food, that's different to me than out on the road.
This is, this is an area, especially with fast food, that I would, I would be careful of providing exceptions because what is fast food? Do you consider a Panera with a drive-through to be the same as a McDonald's, the same as a Starbucks? Or how you would handle with this out parcel, whether it's in the shopping center? I think if the council has the appetite to go forward with this zoning in progress, I think it would be my recommendation you take it as a whole. This is, this is an area that, part of the reason we would do this is to provide a lot of clarification for those areas. Going down the path of carving things out or trying to figure out how we're going to define things at this point might be a little premature.
Counsel, Greg?
I just, going back to the thing, I just disagree with the whole thing, with this, to do this, to start. I guess my thought is like, especially when you start talking out parcels. If Dunkin' Donuts was going to come in today, they wouldn't be able to because there's a McDonald's and a Guanamias right there beside it. So to me, it's, I understand the intent, but I think that also, I think all the businesses do their research. They're not going to put five gas stations in a row if they're not going to make money. So obviously, there's a need for it. And then how far does it go? If you go with, let's throw it out there, Wawa's, who provides food? Can you put a Panera within 500 feet of it? It's kind of two different mixed uses, so, just personally, I'm against it.
Steve?
Same here.
Peter?
John or Audrey, so what's the-
John or Audrey, so what's the lay of the land on this in Florida? Have other towns done this, or not, or what?
Some places have gone along these lines, and I'd have to see how many of them there were. I do know that there's places that look at separation between gas stations or convenience stores. I know that, and I can't give you examples off the top of my head, but I know there's places that have provided separation between fast food restaurants. But when they've done that, they've gone through to specify and clearly define exactly what fast food is. So you don't have a situation where the Wawa and a McDonald's or Dunkin' Donuts are in competition or figuring who can come in first. So it has been done. I think there are valid reasons to go down these paths, but at this point, you know, the zoning in progress is really a question. I think the ordinance change is something that can be very productive for the city. The zoning in progress, while we're coming up with these regulations, I mean, that's entirely up to you. Right now, we don't have, we don't, to my knowledge, have applications in for these uses. So I don't think we're under direct pressure to date.
I tell you, my view, wanted to answer the mayor's question, is this on? Is to skip the zoning in progress and to study this. Because I think, you know, there are fair points here that are being made, on the other hand, on both sides. And I just appreciate, excuse me, I'd appreciate a little more knowledge about it. I mean, the other, this is different than the last one to me, because it does kind of grab at the free enterprise system in a way. So I just appreciate more background, it's not anything that's pushing at us right now. Almost, let's study it, is my view.
My, I guess my other question would be, what's considered high intensity?
Well, and that's it, because with our, I want to go out on a limb here, I don't want to offend anybody.
With our elderly population, a doctor's office could be high intense.
Greg, let the record show that you said that.
And one that was in New York City a couple of weeks, you know, that's high intensity, too. With water towers without water on the roofs, but anyway.
By the way, I could tell you what the answer to that one is. But I agree with Greg, in other words, there's just a lot, there's a lot to look at here, and maybe they, at the end of the day, not buy that, but there may be something, there may be something we can do.
And Jackie just reminded me, I'm very thankful that she's here, that Benita 75 is looking to come in for some entitlements. They've already come through to have the fast food restaurants approved, and I think now they're looking to market each of the properties for tenants to come in to build. Just as a-
Yeah, this is a lot different than enhance your landscape, this is you can't do it.
Correct.
Yeah, I agree with Greg's point, and I also would like to have, I don't really know what the term centric zones are. There's, there's things in these, in this ordinance that I think need clarification. So I think we should have just a conceptual discussion about what the concern is and whether there's a problem here, you know? How problematic is it for Benita Springs and would we anticipate in the future before we impose a regulation that's probably not necessary?
Thank you, Amy. Mike, did you have?
No, I'm in agreement with Greg and Peter. You know, it's just free enterprise, you know? Some businesses make it, some fail, that's just what happens.
Fred?
Well, I'm, I don't have a problem doing this, I think we need to get it in gear because we only have so many intersections left. And if you just play it down Benita Beach Road, how many intersections we have where there's two gas stations? Or we have two drugstores? And you're, so there's only so many intersections, and those are your prime corners for any kind of business, whether they be-
I'll tell you where my head goes more, and was thinking about this in the midst of the last conversation, the long conversation. If you look at Astero, they have a design review board. And I was thinking as we were, for two hours talking about this, this should not be an us-versus-them type of thing. You know, it shouldn't be. And when you look at, now the Astero Design Review Board, they've had their moments, okay? But if you go to their meetings, when they're working with developers, they're, they're really working to try to make things better and thinking like the developers think and trying to get to win-win. And somehow we have to get this, and I'm sure John does that in his shop, but somehow, I think from an economic development point of view and just a fairness point of view, that's somehow where we got to get the conversation going. And the way they deal with gas stations is landscape the heck out of them so you can't see them and such, you know? see them and such, you know, and that's kind of where my head is.
No, I agree with it, and then that takes the free enterprise, you know, out of it. Let's get to win-win. How do we get to win-win, right? I'm all for free enterprise, and I'm also for win-win, and I'm also for making it look good, right? I think we all are.
And I think that we are, we have a very good process in place. We use a single architect for our discussion. That single architect, though, has to enforce the policies that this council sets forth, and I think the discussion that we need to have is go forward as to what policies do you want to see in place for these type of uses? And as long as everybody agrees to what those policies are, I believe we can carry those out pretty well with how we're working.
And Greg, did you?
I was just going to say, I agree, I think the important thing is to make it look good. Do we care if it, if there's five pharmacies along that road? They're going to make it or they're not.
They're all going to make it.
They're all going to make it, you know what I mean? But that's my point, I think that's the intent. I don't think that we should dictate, or banks, I don't think we should dictate what type of...
Business goes in there.
Business goes in there, I mean, that, they're going to do their marketing research, and they're going to see if they can make it or not. Our job should be to make it look good and to feel right.
I agree.
Amy, do you have more?
No, I agree.
Okay. Steve, down at this end of the bench?
We're all saying the same thing.
This is a bench all of a sudden?
What's wrong with us?
Yeah, the bench. Okay, now, this is public hearing, members of the public, thank you, John, very much. Rick, come on up.
All right.
You must be getting stiff, you've been sitting a while.
Yes, for sure, you guys are working your butts off up there. Rick Steinmeier.
Thank you, Rick.
Are we, is it our job as a government to dictate free enterprise and where they can put their investment into the city? We're getting so particular now, y'all live in gated communities where everything's been planned out and placed where it's going to be forever and ever.
DeWitt and Gibson included, right? All right.
But now, you're trying to dictate the rest of the world where they can have a McDonald's next to a Burger King. You guys are getting too involved, you're working too hard. Let free enterprise go a while, come on. You know, it's not your money, and I don't know how much of your money any of you are spending, but I got my tax bill, and don't worry, you're not getting, you're not taxing me out this year, I'm going to be around next year too. I can pay my bills this year and maybe next year. So, I'll be back, and let's stop trying to regulate everybody and everything, and so thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Other members of the public? Michael?
Thank you, Mayor. Mike Maurer, I'm here on a different parcel, Benita 75, which is the northeast quadrant. I think I'm in agreement with everybody on here. One of the things I did want to mention, the newer concepts that are coming out with quote-unquote "fast food," because of development costs and because of synergies, a lot of them are now, they'll have two users in a single building. You'll see a Burger-5 with a Chipotle, or you see a Starbucks with a Culver's. They go through that process because it's cost savings for them to enable, to be able to serve food so cheaply. Second is, if you're going to ever consider something like this, you may want to look at certain activity centers where they would be exempt, like the interstate, where it makes sense to get them together for people to have ease of access, or at major intersections like Benita Beach Road and 41. But third, and probably the most important, would be, this type of an ordinance is wide open for a takings case. If somebody were to put up a McDonald's at the corner, at the 18-acre wooded area, for instance, that Mr. Nashman is in the process of trying to get approval rights for, that would eliminate fast food across the street at Benita 75, and it would eliminate fast food at our park. And it's something we're zoned for, and it's a stick in our bundle of rights that we're allowed to, and if you go down that road, you're going to open yourselves up to takings. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Michael. Anybody else from the public? Seeing none? No, I'm kidding. Hello, Martha, how are you?
Hi, how are you doing? Martha Simons for the record. Okay, we need economic development in this town. I'm not in favor of increasing voting requirements for, for...
What? We're not on B?
We're on the zoning in progress.
God bless you, talk to you real soon. I thought we were on, sorry? Okay, I'll tell you about it later.
That's all right, you might, you might have pages one, three, and five yourself, and not two and four, you never know.
That's good.
It happened to me earlier, Martha, don't worry about it. Okay. Anybody else from the public? Okay, counsel?
Making a motion to reject?
Yeah, second.
Okay, there's been a motion to reject and a second? Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye, aye.
Councilman O'Flynn? Only get one.
Only get one? Come on, Amy.
On Detroit.
This isn't Chicago or Detroit, okay, fair enough. Okay, thank you very much, and now we're going to move on to Roman numeral 10, the second reading and public hearing of the following ordinances.
And I'll try to get very fast on these as long as public...
You need a sip of water?
No, I'm okay.
You're good, okay.
Thank you, though. This is an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, to repeal in its entirety, Benita Springs Ordinance Number 04-02, granting a franchise with Comcast Cable Vision of the South, Inc., pursuant to the City of Benita Springs, Florida cable television ordinance providing for an effective date. This is the second reading of the ordinance, the ordinance was advertised in the Naples Daily News on Sunday, August 7, 2016. We do not have the affidavit of publication yet, but we expect it, and we do have proof that it was advertised, and that's with the city clerk. This ordinance, this is your third time hearing this ordinance, this ordinance was part of an assignment provided to one of my law clerks over the summer, and this is to do some, what I call, housekeeping items. State law allows Comcast, as well as any other communications company, to get a state-issued certificate of franchise, and they did exercise that power, and state statute then says any ordinance you have on the book is against public policy and is therefore void. So, at this point, I just want to get the ordinance off the city books.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second? Further discussion?
Public?
Okay, public. We're still with the public, I'm sorry. Apologize. Anybody from the public? Okay, seeing none, counsel, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slachan? Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Okay, great, thanks. Audrey?
Thank you, I'll read the next title block into the record. This is an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, to repeal in its entirety, Benita Springs Ordinance Number 03-23, the City of Benita Springs Cable Television Franchise Ordinance Providing For An Effective Date. This is second reading of the ordinance, I reviewed the proof that it was advertised, and as I mentioned before, it's on file with the city clerk. City council on August 3 held the first reading and moved it to a second and final public hearing today.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second? Okay, members of the public? Further discussion by the counsel? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slachan? Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Okay, Audrey?
Good morning, Alex Boswell, I was Assistant City Attorney for the Record. This is the second reading and final public hearing of the following ordinance, an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, amending the Benita Springs Rental Permit Ordinance, amending Sections 12-107 through 12-111, revising ordinance to reflect current practices providing for conflicts ever building, inclusion in code, and an effective date. I have also approved, reviewed the publication proof, that's on file with the clerk. As you've heard at two previous meetings, this ordinance makes a series of changes to the permitting process for non-dwelling, non-owner occupied dwellings, and it's designed to improve and simplify the process.
Motion to approve.
Second. You guys are on a roll.
You guys are on a roll, there's been a motion and a second? Yeah. Public?
Yes, down on Benita Beach, Hickory Boulevard, there's Home Rentals, a company renting these houses for a week or so, and they say they're exempt from the tourist development tax, and exempt from the rental permit program. Says they say they're a state license or something, maybe somebody could clarify that. Are you familiar with that, Audrey?
I'm familiar with tourist tax, and according to this ordinance, tourist development tax, if they are paying for, this is not a transient rental ordinance, this is for people who live in rental, so it's not a lodging issue. Those people are required to pay taxes if they enter any kind of lease, whether it's verbal or written, under six months. So, if they think that they're getting away from taxes, they may find a freeze on one of their bank accounts.
You've seen all these green, all these green signs on Hickory Boulevard?
I will be happy...
And they're all short-term rentals.
I will be happy to report any to the tax collector for collection purposes.
Okay.
But I don't know if they're not paying, but the people...
I talked to the guy, he said they're paying to the state, and they're inspected by the state, and somehow they're avoiding the Lee County's tourist development tax.
That money goes to the state, too, and there might be miscommunication.
Okay.
Or non-collection.
It'd be nice.
Hello, Martha? How are you?
I'm concerned about the changes here. Exemption of apartment complexes and duplexes where the owner permanently resides in one of the units? I'm sorry, no. Because that's still, that takes away the ability to inspect the other unit, and, you know, one of the reasons we have this rental permit here in the city of Benita Springs was because tenants were afraid to report violations in their unit. I, in particular, got a call at 4:00 in the morning, before we were a city, from somebody who had lived over off of Felce, there was a really dilapidated place that was owned by somebody out of town, and the whole place caught on fire about 4:00 in the morning, everything burned down. They had a lot of people living in there, and I said, you know, didn't you, did you know that there was a problem here? He said, but we were afraid to say anything because we didn't want to get evicted. But one thing that the rental inspection does is it kind of, you know, without any onus on the person who lives there or neighbors or anything to report, it automatically has somebody come and inspect the rental unit. I think that's really important for the health and safety of people who live in this town, and even with the rental permit ordinance in effect that's currently right now, you still have problems out there that, because of the volume and the load, I think we need more code enforcement officers, frankly, and a more vigilant code enforcement, enforcement. Now, I like calling it neighborhood services, but really, we need to kick it up a bit. There's some problems around town, as, you know, has been noted by other council members here before. I just object to this exemption of apartment complexes and duplexes where the owner permanently resides. On my street, we've got somebody who, you know, now they're, now the building is going to be condemned because they wouldn't fix the wiring, and they wouldn't fix the plumbing, they were putting water out into the yard, it's been going on a long time there, and it'd been reported, anyhow. So, we just need to take care of the tenants, so maybe send it back to get a little more reworking, don't turn it down right now, that would be what I have to say about that. Thank you very much.
Okay, great, thank you.
More code enforcement officers, please, they're overwhelmed, there's a lot to do out there.
Great, thank you. Peter, did you have something?
Carl or Frank could maybe answer this, or, yeah, I think...
Frank? Come on forward, you were hiding back there, I didn't even see you. I can see that yellow tie, though, how you doing?
Good, good morning. Frank Cassidy, Director of Neighborhood Services.
So, Frank, let me just ask, first, I've heard of this, and I think Martha makes a fair point, on number one only, I think she's talking about, and that seems to say if you have a whole entire apartment complex, I guess however large, and the owner of it happens to live in one of the units, it's exempted from the law, so why would we be doing that?
It goes a little deeper than that, it goes into an association or some other kind of governing system with larger complexes that already have in place some mechanisms through leases and/or property management, onsite property management that are held to different standards, so it's a duplication of efforts in those cases, where we're coming in and doing basically the same type of an inspection that the property management company is doing or another governing body. It's also in lines with the vacation rentals, you already have an entity which is doing those types of inspections, so we're doubling up on them. The other point that I believe Ms. Simons was alluding to was like a duplex situation where you have a property owner living right next door to the tenant, where you have that responsible party living there, and our findings have been that there's a greater effort to maintain those properties, and we have less violations on them because the life safety issues are directly affecting the property owner, so they're right there, they're adjacent, so we're addressing those issues with the property owner. This does not prevent anybody who's living in a property to issue a complaint or call us about any kind of a concern, okay? This only has to do with the rental ordinance. We still pursue and we process cases all the time about unsafe living conditions regardless of what they are, so even if they don't have to have this rental permit, they're still subject to the minimum housing and safe housing provisions that we enforce through the implementation of the International Property Maintenance Code, so it doesn't exempt them from those regulations, it just, it just takes them out of the requirement to register with us.
Audrey, let me ask, sorry, I don't know if you follow, but on the first point, Frank was explaining that some big complexes have HOAs, and they have their own standards and such, but that kind of makes sense to me, but is the language exempt for that? I mean, the question is, what about an apartment complex that doesn't have that?
Right, if you look at, on page 2, subsection A1, I believe that's one where somebody has a property manager and the unit has six dwellings or more, if it's under six, if it's, any property with more than six dwellings, then it meets the exemption Frank was talking about, and that's what, when council adopted the ordinance, they recognized that we're not in the property management business, we do not want to be in the property management business, but because there are small entities out there that if we don't have some minimum standards, there'll be people living without minimum standards, and the minimum standards is making, I think when you do the inspections, you check to make sure the windows are operational, you make sure there's fire extinguishers.
Smoke detectors, the minimum life safety requirements.
Right, it doesn't mean that the paint is going to be a certain color.
Right.
Thank you.
And I could use the example of, for example, the Imperial Benita Mobile Home Estates, okay, they, they're an association, it's a large, large community, but they do not have HOA, so therefore, they're subject to this. That's an example of one that's large that does fall under this, so they're not all exempt.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you, Steve, and then Fred.
Bottom line, Frank, it's less like, you know, you got a larger complex, you get a complaint, you talk to the manager, and you go and inspect.
Absolutely.
That's it.
Thank you. Fred?
So, I want to understand one thing, if you're, if you have a property, whether it's a single-family home or a duplex, in an HOA, then that owner does not have to, there's no rental, this thing doesn't apply to them, is that, that's a simple yes or no?
If it has an HOA with those governing documents that handle the leases, yes. Okay, it doesn't fall under this, but it does not exempt them or take them away from the minimum housing requirements under the Minimum Housing Code or the International Property Maintenance Code, so they're still subject to those provisions.
Right.
They just don't have to register the rental unit, because most of the times, they're already registered through the HOA.
Right. One more question, if, if, if the owner doesn't sign some agreement with the city letting them know that they're renting, how would the fire department know that they should periodically check to see if a rental unit meets?
Fire department doesn't.
You don't?
We don't do single families, we only do multi-stories, three stories or greater that are sprinkled, and we don't go in residence, we just check the general fire alarm.
Even if it's, even it's being rented out?
Nope.
You check the fire extinguishers, too?
Yes, it's commercial, yeah.
Good.
Okay, counsel, Amy, did you have anything?
No, I had a previous conversation with Frank, and I think that you are satisfied
and I, I think that you are satisfied with the ordinance because one of the reasons we're having this is because you had trouble monitoring what was going on. And you're comfortable that these will give you the tools necessary to do your, the job that you want to do.
Absolutely. These provisions, these changes, and they're fairly minor in the whole scope of things, were, were brought about with discussions with landlords, property owners, and then how this was being managed. So this is, they should refine the system and make it better for the application and then the enforcement.
But you, you responded to a problem that you saw. I mean, there was, something was broken and you're trying to fix it.
That's correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Greg?
No.
Good.
Mike? Well, I, I'd like to amend my motion to drop amendment one off of it, then.
I second it.
It creates a little more work for Frank and Neighborhood Services, but...
Amendment one?
That way we still go after, you know, we, we still check on the ones that are duplexes with the owner as a tenant and also the small apartments that have an owner as tenant.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Frank, go ahead.
Well, I don't know which one you're, any property, is it the one on page two that says any properties with more than six dwelling units?
No.
No, no.
What he's talking about is on the bottom, the new language, number four.
Number four on page two.
Page two. Apartment complexes and duplexes where the owner permanently resides in one of the, okay.
That way you still check up on them.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. We're clear on what it is? Okay.
Restate it.
Let's restate it, so we're clear?
It's basically as is, except we're dropping off the, the exemption for apartment complexes and duplexes where the owner resides in one of the units.
Strike your number four. Number one on the first page.
Yeah.
One on the green sheet.
Not number one.
Well, on the green sheet. It's number one on the green sheet.
Okay, okay.
Which is actually, section 12 dash 106, section 12 dash 107, I'm sorry, A, number four.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
All right, no, that's good. We're clear on what it is? And is there further comment by the council?
No.
Okay, is there further comment from the public?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm a big fan of code enforcement. And I want to make sure they're empowered to do what they need to do. So, you know, I don't want to take anything away from Frank. But really, he just said that this is about talking to the property owners and the landowners, but it's not about talking to the residents and the tenants. And I just know from experience, also because I used to be a property manager and a tenant on both sides of that, and also knowing the laws in Florida for tenants' rights, that this is the right thing to do, you know, to take that offer right now. And if you need to beef up, you know, and give them some more help, give them some more help. But really, we, the ungated part of the, and the HOAs, fine, you know what I mean? But the ungated part of Benita really has a problem with rentals still. And as much as code enforcement can do, there's still problems out there with that. You can't, if you can't get in, you can't see what's going on, as much as you have somebody on site. The other thing is the tenant, like I said, feels a little intimidated if the property owner is living on the property. You know, like, ew, I better not call. Because when you call code enforcement anymore, hard, sorry, but this isn't a secret, they've got caller ID. And you're not really anonymous anymore. They need to not, they put tape over that or something. So you can make anonymous calls to code enforcement? That would be good. Put tape over the caller ID. Then you wouldn't know. But anyhow, I applaud you, and I applaud Frank. Yay. And the whole team over at code enforcement. Thank you. Neighborhood Services, thanks for doing that, Mike. Imperial Harbor would be affected, so appreciate that.
Thank you. Further discussion from the public? Rick?
Yeah. These properties are temporary rentals on Hickory Boulevard. They have a property manager. They come, I don't know exactly, somehow it's, they're exempt from the, from the... Because they're short-term rentals, they don't have to be inspected, I guess, is what... Are you familiar with them, Frank? All those down there? Can you explain to me what, they're inspected by the state or something? I don't know.
I will, I will do my best. They are regulated by state statute as short-term rentals, and they're required to pay a tourist tax or tourist development tax increment, therefore that they, they're falling under a different regulation than, than our rental ordinance are. And so by default, and I got a look at Audrey to help me with the legal language, but because the state already regulates them, then we have to take a backseat to that. So it's, in essence, you're, you're regulating the same thing twice. So in their short-term rentals, it's something that's been addressed by state statute for years now, and it's been a rather contentious argument there at the state level regarding how those were supposed to be managed. And that's, that's what this is trying to do, is recognize the requirements of state statute and, and keep us out as we're directed by the state. How do I do with that?
Very good. Right, this is one of those where you have a preemption for certain types of uses. And Hot, Department of Business Regulation, Division of Hospitality, I believe is the correct entity who does the regulations.
So very good on substance. How do you do on style points?
Yeah.
Lovely.
Okay, great. Very good. Seeing how we're in the Olympics, yeah, right, Olympic season.
Just being square?
Very good, yeah. Further comment from the public?
If I could, see, they don't regulate the number of cars that coming into the parking lot. They're parking into the, you know, they, they got 20 cars where the city's inspection says you can have so many people living in this, in this building or in this house. They don't seem to have any regulation as to how many people they can jam into this house for two weeks. And cars parked all over the place, where we have regulations on how and where the cars can be parked. And so I don't...
More government.
Thank you, Rick. Anybody else from the public? Council?
No.
Roll call, please.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slackta?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Audrey?
Thank you.
Still good without the water?
I have one right here.
All right, good, all right.
It's standing up that helps me. For the record, Audrey Vance, this is an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, amending ordinance number 08, 00 dash 08, adjusting the rate of the Florida Power and Light Company non-exclusive electric utility franchise, providing for payments to the city of Benita Springs and providing for an effective date. This is the second reading of the ordinance. As I mentioned earlier, we have a proof of publication on file with the clerk's office. And when she receives the affidavit of publication, it will be maintained in her office. Council, as, it's relatively self-explanatory. I can go through the process. I do want to point out to you that I did provide a copy of this ordinance to Florida Power and Light, and they did review a copy of the ordinance and found that it would effectuate an increase should a council elect to go forward with it, as drafted.
Okay.
And yes, and Charlotte Miller, who is our government liaison, is in the audience today.
Okay.
She wasn't planning to speak.
Hi, Charlotte, how are you? I wanted, sorry to ask you to stand up. The stretch might feel good, just so everybody knows who Charlotte is. Do you want to say anything, Charlotte, or?
Charlotte Miller, FPL External Affairs Manager. I don't really need to discuss it for you unless you have questions. I'm glad to answer them. That's the main reason I'm here today. As Audrey said, she has submitted the ordinance to our, our franchise legal counsel at FPL. It was perfect. And it, within your franchise agreement, you are able to, to increase it 1% at a time. So if you approve that today, we will receive a certified ordinance from city clerk prior to September 1st, and it would go into effect December 1st, per, per the city's request.
Okay, great. Thank you. Council, any questions?
Yeah, who pays the franchise fee?
Who pays the franchise fee? Everyone, including the... You can't hear me? Okay. The franchise fee is, unless there's a provision in a franchise by a city in which in yours there is not, everyone does pay a franchise fee. Even the city pays a franchise fee on your own buildings, but you do receive it back through a monthly check from F, or a monthly dispersment from FPL, either by check form or automatic transfer.
So you're saying this fee is directly passed, straight through to?
It's a total pass-through, yeah. Would you like me to briefly explain what the, what the reason for a franchise agreement is? Is everyone familiar with that, or? Yes, you would?
I'm familiar.
Oh, yes, you're familiar. Everybody's good? Okay, all right, great.
Thank you.
Right, so it's a straight pass-through, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, very good. Audrey?
If you have any questions about the ordinance, I can answer. More, Anne Wright can answer then.
Yeah, I move the motion.
Okay.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second and a third? Any further discussion? More public comment? We've...
Just real quick, this has nothing really to do with the franchise except that they operate in our town, and, you know, we all use their power. But we have a lot of extra power poles around, and this is my only opportunity to really speak to her. And they came in and put these power poles up, but they didn't take the old ones down. So whatever they can do, I know this was a thing for Rick Steinmeier, but how many years ago was that, Rick? 12 years ago? We finally got the old ones down. Then they came in and put more new ones up, and now the ones that were new are old. And Charlotte, can you get those old poles down, please? It's a real eyesore along our corridors, especially along a Royal Road and Benita Beach Road. Thank you.
Yeah. All right, very good. No, I think, Charlotte, if you could look into that and let us know, please? That'll be great. Okay, wonderful. Okay, roll call, please.
I just had another comment, which is...
Oh, no more comments, all right. Lay it on us.
No, real, real quick, this is probably the fourth or fifth time we've talked about it. But just to be clear, in my view, this relates to the debt that exists and the need to pay down and deal with that, the debt service on that over time. That's the only point I wanted to make. I've made it before, but I wanted people to be clear about this. Thank you.
Well, I guess, Audrey, is there a way to put a sunset on this? So that way, a future council would have to vote to keep increased taxes, instead of having it just rollback?
Council, we have done in the past, I think if you look at section five, wait a second, 5B, we did an 18-months increase. The only problem is it does take about four months to gear in line for an increase. So it would effectively be like a, if you did a two-year, I mean, I could change it to a two-year for the election, but it, it only acts as a one and a half year.
So this is only going in for 18 months?
No. The way it's drafted, it's an increase of 1%, which is the most you're allowed to increase in any given year. If you wanted to do something that had, we don't want to sunset the entire, you're not suggesting to sunset the entire franchise, right? You're just talking about cha... The increase, okay. We could do it, but understand that doing it, we would have to, if we decided we did not want to do the sunset, it would take about a six-month gear around to, to re-initiate it.
Yeah, but, but a future council would have to vote to keep the increased taxes.
A year and a half. Right. If you did two years, about a year and a half.
Okay. So council will recall when we brought this forward that there was a certain calculation of trying to reduce debt more quickly. 18 months will not do that. And, and the, and the reason, yeah, it's going to be about four years. But we, we hit this 1% cap increase each year. So just so everyone's clear, should you go forward with this 1% increase this year, you really should consider going forward with an additional X percent in a coming year so that you can realize the, the revenue that you're looking at, so just, that you're looking to receive, to reduce the debt. So I just, that's certainly a possibility. But yes, I think if council wanted to put an appropriate sunset on it, you, you certainly could do that.
Yeah, I would recommend, it's pretty clear from my perspective anyhow. The debt payment is $3,006,000,000 this year. It's more than any department in the city. It's more than we pay the sheriff's office by far. It's more than all of Matt's expenses. It's more than Parks by far. $3,006,000,000, that continues, $3,006,000,000, $3,006,000,000, $3,006,000, $3,006,000, $3,006,000,000, until 2022. And my suggestion is to sunset it at that time. So it goes to, in a, functionally, it goes to that debt service. If people want a sunset.
I don't, I don't understand what 5B does at all. That I don't get. What is that in there for?
5B, okay, so when the city incorporated, there was a period of time where there was franchise money that Lee County would not accept for the Benita Springs area. That money was not collected. And so for the initial city council to capture, at that time, the Lee County fee, they did have to increase the amount for a short period, which was 18 months, to meet that capture period.
So this doesn't affect what we're trying to do here at all?
This is old language.
This is old language. But that's why I was confused, okay?
Okay. Council?
I'll second. I amend my motion to, on the sunset, Greg?
Yeah, on the sunset.
So I'd amend my motion on the sunset, to have a sunset at the end of 2022.
So commencing on December 1, 2016, and...
Second.
Ending on December 31, 2022.
2022. Carl, does that make sense?
Anne, is this going to be sufficient? We're trying to deal with the sunset provision. Want to make sure it's applicable for the appropriate amount of time.
Based on the numbers that we're using now, which is the best information we have, that would be sufficient.
Okay.
But it'd be subject to what the actual revenue collected would be every time.
We could always change it as, yeah, as we get close to it. Right. No, it's a fair point, Mike, yeah.
Cut it off sooner if that's the way it looks.
Right. All right.
Motion and a second?
Fred did one or two.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Slackta?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
No.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
No.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Okay, thanks. And we're going to move on to the errata sheet now. If everybody wants to grab that.
We have communications tax.
You have to do the communications. Thank you. And this is another one.
I can only go by the playbook that's in front of me. Thank you.
Excuse me one second, Mr. May. Should there have been public comment on that last one?
I thought there was.
There was.
It was open and it was closed.
Oh, fine. Sorry. There was. I'm sorry, Rick, there was.
Well, yeah, you talked about it after, I didn't have a comment.
Because for the council.
Rick, you got up two or three times. There was public comment.
On the electric, on the electric bill?
Thank you.
On the electric?
Yeah.
Well, we're talking about earmarking and all this money to pay this debt. Is that part of this deal? That's what I heard. Is that part of the deal? Or that was, was that decided?
We were on it for several minutes.
Sorry about that.
Ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Thank you. This is second reading of the following ordinance. This is an ordinance of the City of Benita Springs, Florida relating to increasing the local communication services tax rate, providing for intent, providing for increased local communications service tax rate, providing for notice to the Department of Revenue, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. This is second reading of the ordinance. The ordinance had its first reading at its August 3, comma, 2016 city council meeting, at which time council moved the ordinance forward. On your, you received a copy of an errata sheet today. There are two attachments to the errata sheet. The first is the ordinance revised. Now, it does not have it in underlined and crosshatched because it's not an amendment to an ordinance, but the areas that the ordinance changed to reflect how to increase the fee to 3.61 are highlighted. You'll notice that the number to get to 3.61, it stays 3.49. And the reason for that is because the state statute has an add-on of 0.12% for municipalities that choose not to levy a permit fee. So we don't charge the communication companies a permit fee every time, so we get an additional 0.12. So to get to 3.61, you have to take out that, otherwise I would have put 3.71. And to make further clarification, I referenced a resolution, which is how we increased the tax the first time. The statute at that time said you were to do it by resolution, and the increase references that, and so just as prudent measure, we attached a copy of that resolution, so council had it with them. The increased date where the rate will be effective is January 1, 2017. This is the one that is most state critical because if you do not have the paperwork in to the Department of Revenue, you sit out for another year. And at that point, Ann can answer any fiscal, and I can help you with any other questions.
I'd like to move it with the same sunset provision.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Ann?
Wait, Audrey?
Okay, so the increase rate is to be effective January 1, 2017. You want me to add a sentence to the effect of somewhere that December 31, 2022, the tax will go back to the 1.70?
Yes.
Just clarification, Audrey, are we going to have to vote on that prior to, if we want to extend it before September, so don't we have to have it in by a deadline?
Right. I mean, I can't continue this ordinance. I can add language.
No, no, no. My point being is if you put the effective date of 2022, are we going to have to vote on it in August of 2021 in order to rescind it if we've got to have it in a couple of months before that?
What I'm going to do is take this and write, take, change and modify the sentence. This increase rate is to be effective January 1, 2017, and effective December 31, 2022. The rate will go back to the 1.70.
Mr. Mayor, if I might-
Earl, yes, please.
Okay, Audrey, the question is, will that automatically happen, that sunset, will they automatically stop collecting at that point, or will this council have to take affirmative action in, by September 1 of 2022 in order to get that rate back to the original rate? That's the question.
I am going to try to draft language in the ordinance that provides that, but I cannot tell you what Department of Revenue will ultimately tell me.
Okay.
This ordinance went through about five, you can ask Ann, she probably went through about five changes to get where we are today with them.
Let me make one other suggestion I think is obvious, which is if for some strange reason, these sunsets, as they relate to the taxes, if you can have them in there or something, feel free to deal with that.
Right.
It sounds like, it sounds like there's all kinds of nooks and crannies to this law. I'm just trying to help you out here. Yeah.
All right.
And we have a severability clause, so if that phrase won't, the rest of the phrase should be fine.
Fine, whatever works for you.
And so I'll take the fact that I have the right to do a correction.
If needed.
If needed.
Right.
Thank you. And we have the same opportunity to reduce it if the debt is taken care of.
Absolutely.
Okay. Counsel, any further discussion? Audrey, you have something?
Just make very clear, so I will be making a slight modification to the ordinance, that the ordinance will go back to the current rate of the 1.70, which is what we're collecting today, by December 31, 2022. And make sure everyone, motioners, everyone's fine with that.
Yep.
Okay. Members of the public? Anybody want to speak on this from the public? Okay, seeing none? Further discussion, counsel? Has been a motion and a second? Roll call.
Mayor Simmons?
No.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
No.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to public comment. Anybody from the public wish to make a comment at this time? Please come forward. Hi, Alex.
Hi, Alex Grant, former city councilman. By the way, yes, last, first of all, I want to thank you, city council and the mayor, for writing a letter to Congress, and the question that I have at this time is, did you get a response from that letter?
Haven't seen anything yet, Alex.
Okay. Then the next point is, if you haven't seen anything, and I'm just a little concerned that we're reaching the height of the mosquito season, especially September and October, and if Congress doesn't do anything, then am I right, the ball drops on local government's court? That is the Lee County Mosquito Control District. Now, the Lee County Mosquito Control District has to take care of the entire county. Now, they may be stretched thin, and what happens in that case, there was, and I gave an article to Mr. Cassidy, and it suggested that the certified pest control operators in the state of Florida, we have 7,000 in this state, and they get involved. If they get involved, we need to have some sort of a plan, a fallback plan. And so what I had done, I had submitted a suggestion to you yesterday, and you may want to discuss that suggestion. I don't know if you've seen it or not, but hopefully you did, but the suggestion was that there's a working group formed of certified pest control operators that are residing in Benita Springs, Florida, like myself, and my fellow competitors, and that we help at no charge to the city as volunteers to see what we can do. Just, that's, that's the idea.
Right. This is public comment, and I apologize, but this is not an interaction and so forth.
Right, I understand.
Thank you, Alex. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. You're looking, and I'm nodding my head, so that sounds good. Thank you, Alex, very much. Rick?
Okay, Rick Steinmeier again. Along the lines with what Alex had to say, there's, everybody's my neighbor, let's just put it that way. I have a neighbor that has eight garbage cans, no lids on them, they're outside, they've got eight inches of water in the bottom of them. Mosquito Control says, well, we, we can't tell anybody what to do, all we can do is spray. Code enforcement said, well, they can't go on private property, but they're actually sort of on roadies. So I called Dave Hemlock with the solid waste. You're supposed to have lids on your garbage cans, or you can put a hole in the side of the bottom of these garbage cans, let the water out. But last year, a million mosquitoes coming out of these garbage cans, and I can't find anybody to regulate that. So with this, with this mosquito problem we have right now, if you have any standing water, a bucket of water sitting in your backyard, your garbage cans filled with water, dump the water out so we don't raise any more mosquitoes. So far, I've killed one mosquito. He was in my car, suicidal mosquito. I hate to kill anything, but it's a matter of survival. And I got him. So anyways.
Right. Thank you, Rick. Other members of the public? Hello, Martha?
Again, and I'm really sorry, this is the real reason I came down here. See, you have so many interesting things going on here in the city, you got to say something about them, but this is, this is the reason I came. Thank you, by the way, for designating me to go to the Charlotte Harbor National Estuary at 8:30 in the morning in North Port tomorrow. Appreciate that. Okay, the ordinance that's coming up, I got to go take my mom to lunch, so I got to leave, but I'm not in favor of five to, you know, five out of seven votes on anything because I just don't think it works, but particularly this one. I misspoke earlier, but we need economic development in this town, and I don't think this is conducive to that. So, next, good luck at the Florida League of Cities Conference for whoever's going. It's excellent opportunity to get resources for your service here to the public. You get a lot of good training there, great seminars, and you find out about all sorts of things, grants, and you make great connections with city council members and mayors who in other parts of the state are grappling with some, some of the same issues we're having here in Benita. Next, city manager's budget. This is rumor, I don't know if this is true, but was the TNR program reduced to 15,000 because it should be at 25 because we need to add another vendor? The current vet, great, but there's not the, we could use Dr. Hmichi again. So we need to talk to Lee County about that. Frank? Anyhow, if you could bump that up because I, we really want to put a push. We're starting to lag behind even though we did like 500 cats. Okay, now, this is really the reason I came here. You're going to be selecting a zoning board member, and I'd like to stand here and speak on behalf of Barbara Barnes Buchanan. She's probably one of the most qualified people you'll ever find. She worked for Lee County zoning, particularly Benita Bay and Pelican Landing, so she knows all about that, and planning, she's an urban planner, but also she helped to design the commercial interchanges when I-75 came in. So, I mean, we got a commercial interchange, she knows all about that. She has a master's degree in business and worked in the private sector, I think for Wilson Miller, so she understands that end of the business. She, very few people have this, she's a certified airport executive, and she worked for the airport authority at the airport, so she understands FAA rules and planes going over your house. And as our former assistant city manager, she knows our issues with the DRGR, she knows the people in town, well-liked, well-loved, she knows about the water quality, she helped develop our comp plan. So I hope you'll vote for Barbara Barnes Buchanan. She's a friend of the city and a friend of mine. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Anybody else from the public? Hey, John?
Good afternoon, mayor, council members. I'm John Jenkins, executive director, Benita Springs Utilities, here to speak on item 12A, the sunshine law issue, an attorney general opinion regarding BSU. You know, often candidates run on the basis of making government operate more like a business. I mean, today, we've got it sort of turned on its head. Business is supposed to act more like government. In terms of transparency at BSU, I commend you to go to our website. You'll find there our financial statements, our water quality report, our rates and charges, all the forms that we use, all the information we think anybody in town would need to see in order to understand exactly how we operate. We have board meetings, the first and third Tuesday of every month at 5:00 PM, which are open to the public. We have open houses, we have facility tours. We have a history of reclaimed water on our website, which I have to give Mr. Fitzgerald credit for. I think after hearing so many different stories on reclaimed water, that we, we identified exactly how all of that came to be, and that's available on our website. Our rates and charges are approved by the city. We respond to member record requests pursuant to the not-for-profit statute, chapter 617, as we're required to do by law. And we consider ourselves a partner of the city. We work with the staff on one-stop permitting, the downtown redevelopment, banking ANC fees, and we had the grand champion float in this year's Fourth of July parade. In between that, we manage $300 million in assets and work to provide good quality water and wastewater for the residents here. Now, Mr. Fitzgerald, and I'll speak particularly about him because he's mentioned in the green sheet, and this is the origin of this, he's got a list of grievances with BSU as long as your arm. In fact, last year, in one of his letters to the editor, he wrote that we are the worst public water company in southwest Florida. And you know, that's okay. He's got his opinion, and he's entitled to it. What's not okay is for him to get up or to publish statements like, "We mislead the public." "We're a moral disgrace." "We repeatedly claiming we're in violation of our franchise," and, as he said last council meeting, that "it's a corrupt operation." He's gone to the county, he's gone to the state of Florida, he's gone to the attorney general, he's gone to the city, he's gone to the Public Service Commission, he's gone to the state attorney, I guess concerned about a criminal enterprise at some point. Each time he does this, we spend time and money dealing with it. I received a letter that each of you were copied on yesterday that references Councilman Forbes' comments at our, at the last city council meeting, and makes an argument for changing our manner of voting. I went back in our records and found a letter to Mr. Fitzgerald from Fred Parton, my predecessor, dated October 24, 2012, addressing the same issue. It's not that we're not addressing these matters, it's that some people do not hear what we're telling them. They are not interested in listening. There are two bases under the sunshine law in which that law applies. One is if you're a governmental entity. There's no question that we are not a governmental entity. The second is if we are an agent of the city. I commend you to section 13 of the franchise, which states, and I quote, "Nothing in this franchise agreement shall be construed or interpreted to mean the utility is an agent of the city or the county." Now, make no mistake, that's the only way the sunshine law applies, is if BSU is considered an agent of the city. The city has agreed in its contract that we are not your agent, and yet we're here today talking about this issue. That also begs the question, what about your other franchisees? Are you going to investigate them as far as sunshine law applies? Well, are they different from us? Well, maybe you regulate our rates, you may not do that to the same extent with the rest of them. However, is that a standard as to when the sunshine law applies? In my view, it is not. And it appears to me that you're unclear as to when it applies, or you wouldn't be going to the attorney general. So on that basis, I say, don't single out BSU. What applies to one franchisee applies to the rest. I'll conclude by saying, we respect the council's responsibility to act on behalf of its citizens, but not every citizen and not every request. How many times have you individually thought how much easier it would be if you could talk to one another if you didn't have to operate in the sunshine? Does that make you corrupt? Does that make you want to mislead the public? Or is that just a situation in which it would have allowed you to operate more efficiently, you thought, if you could have done that? Well, BSU has a board of directors elected by our customers, and it's their responsibility to determine how BSU is operated. This is just another end run by Mr. Fitzgerald around our board of directors. We would appreciate you respecting our responsibility and our board to act on behalf of those members. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you for the extra time as well.
Absolutely. Other members of the public?
The infamous Ed Fitzgerald. Most everything that Mr. Jenkins just showed you is untrue. Untrue. And I don't even know where to start. But one way, we could end the whole thing if Mr. Jenkins would provide to you the evidence that he complied with the 1970 franchise issued to him by the county that said, "You required, you must apply to us to make changes to the franchise." He did not. He entered into an agreement with Benita Bay called the Ethyland Reuse Agreement, but now is responsible for 4 billion gallons of Benita Springs water going to a private corporation. Just show me, don't tell me it's okay. Show me where he had the right to do that. And that would end it, by the way. But what do we have today? We have the original wording of the 1970 franchise, which runs with the existence of Benita Springs Utility and remains binding unless changed by the county. And in that now franchise that, I believe, you believe is the current franchise, there have been unauthorized changes in the language. The most recent one was in the last August 3 meeting, where the council approved the wording in that franchise, which takes you and takes the county out of any control over reclaimed water. It says it gives to the board of directors absolute authority to sell, give away, or do whatever it wants with irrigation water to anyone it wants at any time. My friend, that's not language that shows up in a franchise, a government franchise. You don't get a government franchise to serve the people and then say, "You can do it any way you goddamn feel like, because you can't." By the way, Florida statute 12501 charges you with the responsibility for oversight of Benita Springs. So when he says you shouldn't be after them, you have to be after them, it's your job. He says- He says that Fred Parton answered my charge about improper voting many years ago. Answering to me, just to tell me, "Ed, you're wrong." That's not an answer. Tell me the authority that you have to conduct voting where 20,000 Benita Springs residents don't vote, are not allowed to vote. Don't tell me it's okay. Show me. Show me the authority that you use for that rule, and then I'm gonna believe you. I do listen, I listen intently, but I'll tell you what the problem is, I seem to be the only person who's read that franchise. You can't tell me you read it and read different than I read. Of course, I don't believe you. Again, words corruption, wrongdoing, I'm not too sure they're the right words, but certainly BSU is not running a decent operation for the residents of Benita Springs. If they were, they would shut me up, they would sue me, they would do whatever they can. I'm not here, I'm a 25-year resident in this town, have nothing to gain. All I have to gain is the decency of seeing this council operate this utility under their I'm stuck with, in my mind, that it is corruption. And I'm not demented yet, I'm old, I'm not demented. And I challenge you to find the correct answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Anybody else from the public? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, my name is Rich Donley. I'm a 25-year resident of the city, also on the zoning board, and I wanted to just mention one thing about the downtown redevelopment operation that's going on. It's going to be a truly beautiful addition to the city when it's done. It appears you have a great contractor, it might even be on schedule, I don't know, but he's doing a great job. But there's one area of concern that I have, and I've brought this up in the past. The first roundabout is in. It hasn't really been tested yet, of course, because there's not a through-traffic situation. But my concern is of the future roundabout at Terry Street. And I attended the workshop meetings, spoke to the engineer who would design the roundabout, a gentleman from Australia, and he assured me that he'd done these before and it would work just fine. I asked him if there was a formula that he used, a formula that might relate to diameter, traffic flow, circumference, number of lanes, and his answer was, "Well, we did one in clear water, and it works fine." So, I was frustrated with the answers that I'd received, and if any of you have stood on that corner, let's say it's height of season, let's say school has just gotten out, kids are trying to cross, people are trying to come up, come by car and pick up their children, and we have 20,000 cars a day at that intersection, and if you look at the Land Development Code map, traffic map, that's the intersection of two arterial roads. I don't know whether that makes sense to do a roundabout in that kind of situation, but if you stand there at the times that I just mentioned and try to visualize, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I can see that there might be a problem. I'm not saying that there will be. What I'm saying is that we should carefully reconsider maybe this before we put a shovel in the ground. There are other options, there are issues that could help us. I think the Lee County has a great traffic operation, so does the state of Florida. We could find out where other roundabouts have been installed, whether they work, whether they don't work. We could pay attention to some of the letters that were written to the newspaper. This was about four or five months ago, if you remember, there was a whole spate of letters from people who were warning against roundabouts, and actually, in one case, I recall, the state of New Jersey was actually taking them out. So, my request to the board is that before we dig a hole out there, that maybe it should be reviewed, maybe it should be vetted. We certainly don't want to make a mistake. If it is a mistake, it will be a costly one, and it will be an embarrassing one. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other members of the public? Kathy, how are you?
For the record, Kathy McGrath, no, the only comment I want to make is, a reference was just made about, around about being taken out. Excuse me. I think a lot of people are confused. There are traffic circles, and there are roundabouts. And the ones in New Jersey, you have high-speed traffic coming, and they come to this traffic circle. That's not what is down here. And I still say, the roundabout is the proper thing. Now, as far as the kids in school, they'll probably be a, someone there controlling the traffic like there is now. And I thought that the gentleman, when he explained with the, I remember, for example, Amy, you had a lot of questions, and he answered my question, because, you know, it's two lanes, if you want to go this way, people will get used to it. Let's face it, folks, we're 20 years behind on roundabouts in Europe, and they work. They work. So, and I think at this stage of the game, probably, it's already been in the design thing. There's a city in Indiana that has done away with every single one of their traffic signals and putting in roundabouts. And I might as well bring this up now, because I was going to bring it up a little bit later, and I mean, everyone's going to moan and groan and groan when she says this, and I'm talking about the intersection at US 41 and Benita Beach Road. I'm almost thinking, I'd like to see a roundabout there. I think someone should go out and look at comparable intersections. I realize the physical layout of Benita, with the river and all, is difficult, but I think it's something to look into. I think it is here and now, and I think we should embrace it. So, there. Thanks.
Thank you, Kathy. Anybody else from the public? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move along to Roma numeral 12, City Attorney's Report. Audrey.
Thank you, I have two items on the agenda today. The first item is whether or not I should be requesting the Florida Attorney General, a request for an opinion as to whether the city of Benita Springs franchise relationship with Benita Springs Utility subjects Benita Springs Utility. I have public investment, I will be changing that to the nonprofit, to the Florida Public Records Law and the Florida Government and the Sunshine Law. As you can see, writing one of these letters is not an easy task. There are specific requirements on the Attorney General website, and I've had experience in doing so. You are required to provide a memorandum of law, hence, there is the legal, you'll see footnotes as to particular statements. In the letter, I describe what is a franchise. In the letter, I put the test of where you do apply for delegation of authority. That's usually in public records with the Schwab test, but if that did apply, so that they could consider it, or in reverse, give me the negative that it does not apply, and that's a 2015 case, and does explain. I am required by state law, first of all, the Attorney General is, it is discretionary on the part of state law whether or not they will issue an opinion when it is an opinion requested by a local government, whether it's county or city. It's the same. It's discretionary on their part whether or not they are going to give an answer, but I am required to, when making this type of request, I am required to explain that I did receive a vote by city council to go forward with the request, and hence, that's the penultimate paragraph that explains, you know, that council has requested that I do so. If you have questions as to the particular letter, I have attached also a copy of the franchise. I will attach, as requested by Mr. Jenkins, the information that he has. As to some of the comments that were made here today, I just want to point out that Florida Statute, Section 125.01, is the powers of county government. That is not where the city powers are emanated. Cities go under a different state law, just like utilities go under different, special districts go under different, and so that 125 only applies to counties. You'll also see attached the internet email provided to me from the Attorney General's office as to prior requests to their citizens. There's an Office of Citizen Services that Mr. Fitzgerald did respond to, and it was copied to Ms. Gleason, and Ms. Gleason is recognized as the expert on Sunshine Law and public records law, not just throughout the state of Florida, but throughout the nation as this area. But it is clear that they did try to help Mr. Fitzgerald in the past. They've had several communications with him in 2012 and in 2014. They were concerned because they also gave incorrect information to Mr. Fitzgerald, but it was clear in the notes by Becky King, when I see BK, that means Becky King, she's the director of that department, that they referred him to his local government, which at that time was Frank Mann for Board of County Commissioners, and neither local government nor PSC regulate cooperative water utility franchise, water utilities. So, that is in there. So, this has been looked at by the Attorney General in the past, but not for, under a request for a formal opinion. I can make the request if you want. Counsel's call.
Right. Let me ask one question. What about John Jenkins' point about agency? I'm just eyeballing this, I don't see that in here.
If you look at the franchise, and I believe, let me find the section, there is a section, I believe I have it, Section 13, it's on page eight of the franchise.
Right.
And it says, "Nothing contained in this franchise agreement shall be construed or interpreted to mean the utility is an agent of the city or county."
Right. But I heard him saying that that was, I think I heard him saying, that was part of the standard that would apply with respect to whether the Sunshine Law applied.
Yes.
And assuming that's correct, I just, I could be missing it, Audrey.
I understand your point.
But I didn't see it in your discussion.
Let me just check the letter. I think I have it as a footnote. Let me just read real quick.
Well, why don't we just leave it as, if you think it's correct?
If it's not in there, I will be happy to add it.
You have a footnote in your letter where it says, "Consistent with the city charter," and it says, "A copy of the franchise ordinance is imposed with two," and it states in that ordinance under Section 13.
Thank you. It's footnote two. On page one.
On page one.
And a lot of times, I use footnotes only because it's more effective in communication, because some of these are...
Let me just make the point in a different way. I might be missing, all right? I thought I heard him saying that if you're not an agent of the city, I thought I heard him saying that he believes that if you're not an agent of the city, you're not subject to the Sunshine Law.
In order to be subject to the Sunshine Law, they have to either, they have to be created by the city of Benita Springs. So, for example, we have an administrative...
Let me try a different one, because I know I'm confusing you, and I don't mean to be. I guess my point is, I want to make sure that whatever argument he has with respect to this, if it makes sense to you, is properly included in here. That's all. I'll just leave it at that. We don't have to get into it.
I'll make sure he has an opportunity to review the letter to make sure he finds it satisfactory.
All right.
Because he has a right to respond to the letter.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, counsel?
I just had one question. The only question I have is, and it could be confusing to me, it says in here that the letters to, for the public records law, you're asking for both. Is he have to operate in the Sunshine and public records law? Are you asking for both, or one or the other, Audrey?
I did ask for both in my question. And that applies to, it's called the delegation of factors test, and whether or not, under delegation of factors for Schwab, whether or not it's applicable. I believe it's transparency with government, whether you want me to just limit this to Sunshine Law, I can limit it and rewrite it if you wish. That's counsel's call. I believe Mr. Fitzgerald would probably want, if they are treated as a government, he would want both applications of public record and Sunshine Law to apply.
Leave it in there. Counsel? Leave it in there. Leave it in.
I really don't think it matters one way or another, I just know from our standpoint in district, if we enter into a contract with a entity, they're subject to, not to Sunshine, but to public records requests when they're doing direct business with the district. So, I think it's already covered personally, but you can ask it.
Right, that's a contractor relationship. It is covered under the Sunshine Law. I mean, under public records law.
Public records, 119.
Counsel, and I guess maybe I'll just jump in here, I mean, this is, here we are, this has been ongoing, as I would do for any other citizen, casting no aspersions on any entity or any unit. A duty to look at this, a duty to discuss this, and a duty to move forward on this. And that's what this is. Nothing more, nothing less. So, that's why I brought it forward, and certainly, one person's opinion, trying to do one person's duty on a board of seven.
That's why we have the vote, we need a vote.
As I just stated, absolutely.
Just one quick question, then.
Yes.
Should we, I mean, I know it's more work for Audrey, and Mr. Jenkins kind of brought it up, if we're going to do it for BSU, should we ask for one for FPNL, any other franchise agreement? Because what if we get the next citizen coming to ask the same thing? Should we just do it all at once? Or just do them as they come?
I would say do them as they come, but that's, there again, one person's opinion. We haven't heard complaints about the others.
I have a precedent.
Amy, do you have?
I said we'll have a precedent, too.
Yeah. Okay.
And perhaps I misconstrued your intent here, but I think part of the reason that we were asking for this is that we could clarify these issues that have been brought before. Counsel, do our duty, but also hopefully closes a door on it, if we can. But maybe they won't respond to it, we could be in the same position, because we're not in a position to analyze all these things.
My experience with the Attorney General's office is, like I said, it's discretionary on their part. If they don't want to answer it, we're not going to get an answer. You'll get an answer that will say, "We're not answering it."
Okay.
They will respond to us. It just might not be a satisfactory answer.
But if they say, "We're not answering," then we're in the same position, but there's no harm asking, and then maybe they could help us. That's the way I see it.
Fred?
Well, on your point, I think another difference is that, like, FPL, Comcast, they all have other regulatory organizations, such as Public Utility Group and State FCC. There's all kinds of other, in this particular thing, BSU is basically, even though their customers are outside of Benita, they're basically, we are, I don't think we have a franchise to operate other than from Benita Springs and the county.
Counsel, further discussion?
No, I think that they're regulated, too, the same as FPNL, plus still, I'm sure they're going to get a franchise agreement with Astero, since they have some of their...
And they're not regulated by the Public Service Commission.
No, but they're regulated by somebody.
They are exempt from Public Service Commission.
They're not regulated by them.
Yeah, they're not regulated.
Peter?
Yeah, my view is, I definitely hear Ed, and I empathize with him, but on the other hand, I'm going to vote no. And the reason is that this is not the city. This is a separate organization, and individuals who have complaints, concerns, like Ed does, are free to pursue it with those organizations. I kind of think, what if somebody went to Lee County and they said they wanted an opinion on Benita Springs? I know there are arguments on the other side, and I absolutely, the reason I'm a little torn is, I like the idea of closure on it. But I think on balance, I'm reluctantly going to vote no. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, Peter. Mike?
Actually, that's my sentiments, exactly. I'd love to have closure on this. I'm not sure Attorney General's the right person. I mean, obviously, Mr. Fitzgerald's already had two letters back from them saying that they can't do anything, so, I mean, I just, you know, I just don't think it's what we should be doing.
Counsel? All right, I brought this forward, so I'll make a motion to move forward with this. Is there a second? Hearing none?
I'll second it, and discuss it anyway.
All right. There's been a motion and a second, further discussion?
As I understand, the motion would be for me to send the letter out.
Has written.
And finalize it. And finalize it and set it up.
Right. Further discussion, counsel? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilman O'Flynn?
No.
Councilman Gibson?
No.
Councilman Forbes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Yes.
Councilman DeWitt?
No.
Councilman Slackta?
No.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Motion fails.
Okay.
Good.
Okay, very good. Audrey, moving right along here.
Thank you. The next item, this is the new change, so bear with me, because this is brand-new for me. This is permission to advertise after the local planning agency has reviewed some land use ordinances. I put them both on the same green sheet. There are two ordinances here. They did review. I drafted my notes, and yes, they are just a summary of my reflection of the discussion by the local planning agency. As to road impact fee for hotels, the LPA found the ordinance consistent with the comprehensive plan, and it explains that there was some testimony. As to the second ordinance, and that is the one that people call the supermajority, they did find it inconsistent with the comp plan. Now, try to go through this, and also, we also discussed what Mr. Theriak had told me, so I'll talk with counsel about that issue, too. When you start looking at clustering development, and trying to encourage clustering and density, sometimes that increases hype, it does sometimes increase density to get the clustering so you have more open space elsewhere. Those are policies in the comp plan that could be affected by a vote where it takes more people to vote. Now, we could change this ordinance so that, well, let me go back a little bit. Let me go into what Mr. Theriak's provided me. Mr. Theriak, when I sent him the question, sent me an email back. He provided me with a DOA, which is Division Administrative Hearings case, as well as the final decision by the agency on a supermajority provision. I believe it was at the DOA hearing officer where they made a finding that the supermajority required a substantive procedural issue. So, you have due process, there's two things, procedural due process and substantive due process. So, to summarize, usually we talk about procedural due process, that's your normal standard of review, we talk about all the time, and that is, if we apply all the regulations and we put a regulation in effect, and no blue votes on Thursday is the regulation, and that's a procedure, you know, and that's the procedure, no matter how strange it may sound, as long as you're not hitting a protected class, you have a rational basis for your decision, you're in great shape. Substantive due process occurs where it appears that a council or a body may be adopting something to affect one entity, or affect something to pack, what they call packing the deck, or, you know, getting it so that, or stacking the deck, so that you have one, you know, you have an ascertained outcome. So that is the concern or the fear that's emanated in that one DOA opinion. And I talked to Mr. Theriak, and he agreed that was what he was conveying to me in that This is one, again, where it depends on how it's applied as to whether it will be upheld or not. Based on that discussion, based on, you know, review, I can tell you, there's case law that upholds supermajorities or, you know, requiring affirmative votes. We've done it before in the past, we've done it, we already have something in our charter. I feel pretty confident on that part of it. I feel a little less confident if we're doing it and somebody can ascertain a wrong reason, or if it creates other problems. And the position I would take is, counsel, be careful with doing something like this, requiring a mandatory five of the seven. If counsel's not willing to vote based on the substantial competent evidence, and there are one or two of you want to do it for reasons that you're not allowed to do in zoning, such as polling, you know, when you get the large mob...
So, why would, why would be assuming that?
Why would I be assuming?
Yeah.
Because cases out there.
Right. No, in other words, we know what the standards are with respect to substantial competent evidence.
And that's great, as long as I can prove it in court.
Right. And that applies whether it was four people, or five people, or seven people.
I don't disagree, but some, I will tell you that sometimes it's a little harder to prove when somebody might say something to an applicant, or put something in an email, or do some action.
The point I'm making is, the question you're raising applies whether you have a supermajority vote or a majority vote.
I understand your viewpoint. I also say that sometimes the evidence might not necessarily gear towards us, and because you have so much ability for deferential record, why put something that creates another cause of action for them to slam against the lawyers?
That's a different point.
That's the point I'm trying to raise in here, is that usually when you get a lawsuit, they'll raise 10 issues, 15 issues, depending on, you know, and why add another headache to the lawyers, you know, if you don't need to? And that's just the point I'm raising. Now, there's a couple of things you can do on this. You can go forward as written, there is no obligation to follow what the LPA stated, and that's perfectly fine. You can also further refine this language during the hearing process, either now, later, doesn't matter, that the five of seven only applies if it's over the 75-foot threshold, and maybe take out the density. I don't know how you're going to work on that part. You know, only apply to comp plan issues. Again, that's counsel's call, and we can make corrections. I do know that counsel is very conscientious about the cost of advertisements. These ads are very expensive, so I try to group them together whenever possible. So I have the two ordinances. I didn't know if you wanted me to postpone, if you wanted me to go forward with both ordinances, September, for the September 7th hearing, because the display ads are $2,000 a pop?
Oh, $1,500.
$1,500. So they're not cheap.
I have a couple of comments. I watched the LPA hearing twice, and my reaction to this discussion was that this ordinance was drafted in way-too-broad a way, and the, and most of the discussion had to do on the density side. I was one of the council people that advanced this ordinance, but I was focused on solidifying or confirming the notion that we, as a community, have committed to not having heights above 75 feet. I was not a party to the density thing, because I'm not quite sure how that would interact for some of the points that were made in the LPA meeting. So, I was not, while I understood the comments that were made at the LPA meeting, I don't believe that the, that a maximum height, that restriction to a supermajority would at all affect the comprehensive plan. It would not be, and I don't see how it would not be compatible with that, because that is, when we talk, when you read the initial commentary on the comprehensive plans, one of the early things it says is that we, as a community, since 2000, when we first had it, we didn't want heights above 75 feet. So that alone, I think, should be a concentration here, and I disagree with what, oh, is that my phone? Sorry. I usually don't have my phone.
That's your 1 o'clock lunch break call.
Yeah, oh, my God. We'll let it go.
That's okay.
But that's my point, and I think that, you know, I just think this ordinance needs a lot more work, and one of the reasons why the LPA was not pleased with it is because I don't think the intent of the council people that were advancing this was clearly delineated in that. And I was disappointed personally. I was on vacation, so I wasn't there, but the 30 people that sent me, I think it was 30, I don't remember the count, that sent me an email that said they wanted to have this supermajority for height, I have to go back to check that, but it was a number of them, that I think people are interested in confirming our commitment to height restriction, maximum height restrictions. This doesn't mean that when you have a district that has 55, that this, and we want to go to 60, that we would have to vote on it. That was never my intent. So, I think that the ordinance is inadequate for my purposes, so that's, that's my point.
Fred?
Well, number one, if you're modifying or amending the comp plan, that's a legislative process. It's not evidentiary. So that's flaw one. Flaw two is, pardon?
It's still evidentiary, it's a different standard of review. It's not quasi-judicial, but it's...
We don't swear people in, but we don't, we don't have a court reporter in, any of that.
It's not quasi-judicial, but it's still, if somebody has a right to challenge in court, and we saw the standard review to win.
Obviously, they do, but density is, if you were going to do it, density is just as important as height. I know where Amy's coming from, but there's other areas of the city that density is the same as height to the people. So I would say that I wouldn't want to see that taken out myself. I'll vote for it if it is taken out, but it's, the thinking is the same if you're going to do it.
Peter?
Well, can I make a suggestion, Mr. Mayor, that we take these one at a time?
Absolutely.
We're talking about the second one, so maybe do the second one first.
No, I agree with that wholeheartedly. Is that all right, counsel? Take them one at a time?
Yeah, I was going to make the motion.
Okay. Very good.
Well, I have a suggestion, and it's been on my mind for a while, and I'm thinking, since we have Mr. Theriak now, to ask him a question, which is, I agree with Amy in exactly how she said it, but I have had a lingering concern, as you know, about the charter, and whether or not this, whether or not a supermajority vote is violative of the charter. I don't have it in front of me, but my recollection of the words are that action by counsel is taken by four or more. And I'd like to suggest, if counsel's amenable, that you ask him to give an opinion on that.
As to the charter provision?
As to the charter provision. Yeah, an independent opinion as to whether or not that, whether or not that charter provision, it creates an issue with respect to supermajority voting. I don't know, is that, is that fair?
Counsel with a head nod, or?
Yeah, I think what I'm hearing is, I mean, to make it simple, it's 103 right now, to, you know, make the motion to bring this one back after we talk about it some more.
Well, assuming counsel's amenable.
Yeah.
Fred likes to vote on stuff and then discuss it afterwards.
No, I don't want to vote on it. I want to do what Peter says.
Well, let me ask a question, because in his, in Mr. Theriak's email to me, he was also very concerned about what if, a five of seven, what if either counsel has to abstain, or members are absent, they have good reason to abstain.
Yeah, I just want his opinion as to whether or not...
Yeah.
He was hoping that you might have something where you would go back to four in the event you only have a certain, like, if you only have six people voting.
Yeah, but I just have a, I have, yeah, I just have a gating...
We only had four people yesterday in zoning.
I have, I have just, it's a gating question, all right? Whether that provision, which says counsel acts by four or more, in effect, requires that four is it.
Okay.
All right?
Yeah. I think that's good. Counsel, I was going to say, does that sound good to everybody? Greg?
Yeah, that's fine. I was just going to say to Audrey, I think I know the answer to that one.
Yes. Well, actually, it depends on how the language is drafted. We, different subject.
Different, so, yeah.
Ah.
How's it written?
What it reads is, it's the majority of the board, and if there's a five-member board, it's the majority. And if only three people show up, and it's a two-to-one for the affirmative, it still fails, it's got to be unanimous, because it still says three, no matter how many are there.
Yeah, no, that's a very, that's a very good point. Right? If we look at zoning yesterday, there was four people in the room voting on an issue. What do you do then?
If it was three-to-one, in our situation, it would have failed because it wasn't the majority of the seven of us.
It's a great point. It's a very, it's an excellent point. Down at this end, any further comments?
Okay.
Okay?
We're tabling it.
All right, so we're going to table, is that...
So we are ta, let me make sure, so we are only, at this time, we're not table, well...
Whatever you want to call it.
I will come back to the drawing board with the revised...
We're rejecting without prejudice.
All right. Sounds good.
What does that mean?
Here you go, rejecting without prejudice.
I want to know what I need to do. So let me make sure I know what to do.
Very good.
We are, at this point, revise and not to schedule. And then, whether we take it back to the LPA first, or it comes back to counsel first, any...
No, I think counsel wants an opinion on whether or not it's legal under the charter.
Yeah.
All right, so bring it to City Council after Theriak legal opinion.
Specifically with respect to the charter language, not...
Right.
All the other concepts. Right.
And I can send that to him. Now, as to road impact fee for hotels, we'll just go with that one ordinance and schedule it for public hearings?
Well, I know we've talked about this several times, but, and I know the vote's been five to two. And I appreciate my colleagues and the view, but I just wanted to make an additional point that's come up to my mind in the last week, which is, you know, the argument for this has been, no one's building hotels, and no one wants to build hotels in Benita because we're out of whack with Lee County. We're not out of whack with Collier, as much as it's been said that. But in the last week, we've had two, I believe we've had, at the zoning board, and here, one, a request for a 60-bed hotel, and a request for, from what I saw yesterday, what was originally almost a 500-bed hotel, bigger than anything in maybe Lee County, bigger than the Hyatt. So I'm just wondering if my colleagues would want to rethink the thought that we need to dramatically reduce impact fees to attract people who might want to build a hotel in Benita, considering what's happened.
Fred?
I, let me say this, there's more than the ones that Councilman O'Flynn just eloquently listed. There's also the one that Mike Maurer brought up.
Yeah, Fred, a little bit in the microphone, sorry.
One that Mike Maurer brought up, so that brings it through. I think the thing, I would be in favor of shortening up the time they have to get this reduction, so that it, you know, get it done. It's got, instead of two years or whatever, they got to have something in 18 months, or, to me, because what's going to happen, all these deals that are running, they'll not all materialize where they have the permits at the time of the expiration. So that'll sort part of it out. I think you could cut it back a bit, maybe six months or whatever.
Amy?
I'd just like to address Peter's point, because I, I'm in agreement with a lot of the things that you said, and I, and I, I can't remember whether I voted to put this forward or not last time, but I might have just put it forward so that we could discuss it. And I have, and again, looking at the LPA hearing, several points were brought up, and this was a point that I enquired about the last time, was, is that we, that these entities have a mechanism by which they can challenge our impact fees by having an independent study. And in fact, I think there was one that was mentioned near Imperial, Jackie mentioned, I don't know which one she was talking about. I'd like to get some information about what was done there, what kind of study it was done, and how much of reduction they get, and what the process was, and how, just how that worked. Because, you know, I think if we are out of whack, then anyone that has a project can, I think, challenge it, and we have a mechanism.
Good afternoon, Jacqueline Gensen. The property in question was in Imperial Benita Plaza, which is near where the old Albertson's is. There is a developer that amended their zoning, and one of the uses was for a hotel. And what they had done was submitted an independent fee calculation for roads, and part of the data that they used was their most current data that was available, which was from Lee County, based on their road impact fee update. So we honored the Lee County rates at 100%.
So they got a reduction of approximately 40% or something?
It's the current reduction that's before you today.
It's, they got exactly the reduction that we're doing. So they had a mechanism, but they could get it reduced by a formula...
Correct.
Now, was that expensive? I mean, like, how long did it take?
I don't know how much, but they did hire a traffic engineer that did provide the report and analysis for us to review.
And the second point, I think supports what you're saying, is that this is an economic incentive, and for the larger projects, it could be significant. And it seems to me, whereas we want to be embrace of new business coming into Benita Springs, this is not an industry that I think is particularly one that we favor over others. And I think Audrey, in the summary of the conference that you went to, mentioned that when you favor one particular entity over another, that you subject us to a claim of favoritism, and they, and other entities that are not hotels or something else, if it were like a targeted industry, then you have a reason to do that, but if it's not really a preferred industry, as identified either by the state or by us, then I think you would open us up to some, not only criticism, but litigation. Am I wrong from reading that statement that you gave us?
There could be, right, it would go to legislative, but it would be the same type of challenge. Whenever you're dealing with taxes, fees, assessments, it always makes me a very nervous lawyer, because you never know who will be, the hotel folks are going to be thrilled by this, but other fee payers may not feel the same, and we have, you know, we've looked at for challenges before.
So perhaps, perhaps what's happened is the recession has hit us, and that's held off on some development. I'd like to take Fred's point and modify it a bit. Why don't we wait a period of time? We've had a four-hundred-eighty, and I guess it's now a three-hundred-ninety-bed hotel come in, under the current, willing to pay, I gather, the current impact fees, that they were, I think they've been around for a year under the current impact fees. We've had a sixty under the current impact fees. Why don't we just take a few months or a year and wait to see whether or not that perseveres? I mean, we've got what evidently is the biggest hotel in the area paying the current fees right now at our doorstep.
And nothing precludes anybody from an independent fee calculation.
And no one, and as, it sounds like what Jackie said, they got where this thing would have them.
Well, I think it affects more of the smaller hotels, because on a larger hotel, you know, the difference is going to be probably over a million dollars, but like on the smaller forty, fifty-room hotel, the amount that you'd save is probably going to be about the amount that you'd have to spend on a traffic engineer to get you the study. So that's, you know, where the difference is coming in.
Yeah, especially after zoning. On Monday, we did the zoning, that was a fifty-two, you know, boutique type. He may not be able to afford to do the traffic study like that. And like I said, if we're already going to give, we're already, lack of better terms, doing it anyways, we're just making, jumping through another hoop by a traffic study, I don't see the thing, because if you remember right, we're keeping all the other impact fees the same. It's just the road impact fees, and I guess my, the bigger picture is the, if they do come, the added revenue it's going to bring to, we're going to get the bed tax off of it somehow, we're going to get the gas tax, what, all the taxes away from us.
Well, we don't get the bed tax, but...
But that doesn't come to us.
Right, but okay.
Well, the reach and erstment, it does come to us in other ways.
Yeah, but one, the other concern that I didn't raise was this one of, we're going to our budget meeting after, if we ever get done with this one. Here we are, cutting things left, right, and everywhere, in areas that most of us, I think, don't feel totally comfortable with, so it makes little sense to me to cut revenues at this point.
Well, and I do agree with you that it makes, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense, but if we remember in our budget, there's over, if I remember correctly, ten million dollars in the road impact fees that we're not using, all of it at any given time. It's for down the road, and this is a two-year moratorium. This isn't like a franchise fee that's going to go out eight to ten years. This is a two-year thing.
But Greg, what about the basic premise? I mean, the premise, as I remember it clearly, of the whole argument was...
To get them to come.
Yeah, and it appears that's not, I mean, you're talking about, you're talking about a small, by the way, and a huge that are here.
True.
So, I mean, it's like, why are we, maybe we should just step back for a year and see. I think the premise has been undercut, is my point, factually.
Fred?
Well, I think that at least the one that Mike Maurer was talking about, that actually happened, because we did go on record and vote we were going to reduce the fee, so that, but I was going to say, I would, I would like to propose we amend this ordinance to cut it from twenty-four months down to eighteen.
Well, go ahead, Peter, you know, go ahead. I haven't, go ahead, I'll chime in here after you, go ahead.
No, enough said.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want, you know, we're looking at this, and not to put the cart before the horse, but we're also looking at increasing the number of cars they're going to generate on the road, so we're going to be out-of-whack high on the impact fees, and then we're going to be slapping them with the number of cars that they're going to have on the road and traffic studies, which isn't here yet, but is on the agenda, or on the horizon, and I don't know, and we, you know, we don't want to be, we don't want to get ahead of ourselves. We don't want, we don't want, we don't want, we don't, we're trying to generate revenue, however, we can't be so exclusive and expensive that we continue to look at open fields and trees. How much is that going to generate?
Right, and what do you say to the fact that we've had a five-hundred-bed application and a sixty-bed?
That was denied, right? Yesterday, in zoning, with four members.
That's not the point. What do you say to the point that, the essential point, I believe, the logic of it was, that people are not applying, they're not coming here because of this, all right? Now, we've had this discussion, I don't want to redo the whole thing, I think, I feel, I assume Amy does too, that it's not correct with respect to a comparison with Collier County. But leaving that aside, we've had, in the last year, it turns out, we didn't know it when we were talking about it last, two major projects come our way, so what's with that? Why would we want to reduce when they're coming our way?
Yeah, that's, it's a fair point. I guess we just respectfully disagree. Fred, did you have something else to say?
Well, no, I was going to say, on your point, if council goes ahead and pass, approves what community development is working on, on traffic, yes, it will cost the developers that have put traffic out on the road more money, and I, so I think your point, I still would like to propose we reduce it from twenty-four months to eighteen.
You want to make a motion, Fred?
I made the motion.
Okay, you made the motion, I'll second it. Is there further discussion on that? Amy?
I'm not going to vote in favor in either case, but I think that when we had this discussion the last time, there was some concern about the period, because people could not come forward and get something going in time, in twenty-four months, especially for one of these larger, if it's not already in the works, they're not going to have time to do it, and I am not comfortable with changing the process for things that are already in the works. This is just the reverse of what we were talking about the la, for two hours the last time, but the other thing is that we're not encouraging new applications or new dreaming here. It's for the people that are already sort of thinking about it and have, are somewhere in the process for whatever that is, so I don't think that would work if you're going to try to do this. So if you pass it, pass it for twenty-four months. That's my opinion.
All right, Greg, do you?
I just see, either way, I think, I mean, eighteen months, twenty-four months, I think both of them will work. I mean, throw matter in a bus, heck, you said last time, we can get the quadrant, get the quadrant study done within a year, so, or get that moving in a year. If they can get, if we can start buying land for a quadrant study, I think we can, somebody can get a permit for a, for a hotel.
Steve?
Yeah, I'd like to see twenty-four, and really, the whole reason why we started the thing was because we had a landowner come in. He had somebody interested in building a hotel, but they said, hey, I can go over here to Estero for cheaper.
Yeah.
So that was the whole catalyst to this thing, so, but I would like to see twenty-four months.
Okay. Audrey, did you have something?
I just, whatever your motion is, I'll be happy, I just want, I'll reiterate the motion. As I understand it, Fred Forbes has a motion on the floor to reduce, use the ordinance as is, advertise it, and reduce from twenty-four to eighteen months. Is that correct?
Yeah, but you know what? I'll withdraw the motion, so we can get on with it.
And I'll withdraw the second, how's that?
Okay.
Then I'll make the motion as is with the twenty-four.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Very good, Fred.
All right, so understand that it costs a lot of money to advertise. We want to go forward with this ordinance at this time?
Yes, yes.
And it's just one ordinance, because the other one got shelved. I just want...
Yep. Okay, counsel, there's been a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
He's getting a call.
Councilwoman Karamba?
No.
He's ordering food.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slacko?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
No.
Okay, wonderful, okay. Is that it, Audrey? You have any?
That wasn't enough for you?
No, I, no, you did great.
That's it. Those going to Florida League of Cities, have a wonderful time. Remember that you do need to have your four hours for this year, and I believe you can get your training there if you wish.
Yes, we absolutely can. Thank you very much. We need more than four hours, but we'll, we'll get that in.
I'll do mine twice.
You do mine twice, yeah, great. Carl?
No official report, Mr. Mayor, just a reminder that after this meeting, we do, are going to be going into a budget session. However, lunch has been delivered, so...
An hour ago.
As soon as this, as soon as this meeting's over, I'd recommend we take a little bit of a break.
The Zika flies around it. That's all.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Fred does need to take off, but the ballot for the zoning, can he turn that into right now?
Yeah, that's...
Well, let's do, yeah, and no, that's great, that's good, and we're here.
And I apologize, but I have to go meet with all the ministers of town.
Yeah, well, we're going to take the vote right now. Do you want to vote, or have you voted on your ballot?
I'll vote, yes.
Okay.
I voted.
What we're doing here, folks, is, as you know, we've mentioned a few times, we had four people present at a seven-person zoning committee yesterday, one for health reasons, one for an excused or unexcused absence, I don't know, but one for a vacancy. So hopefully, we can help them out here today, and we'll help them out here today. There are three people up for that vacancy, unfortunate, God bless and God rest his soul, Pete Pastore passed away. We loved him dearly. Whether we agreed with him or not, he was an outstanding man. So here we are with three options. We have Barbara Barnes Buchanan from District Four, we have Tom Ralston from District Six, and we have Russell Wynn from District Two. So remember to put your names on it, and cast your vote now, please.
And Mayor, by the way, Frank Lyles had open-heart surgery, and he's doing all good.
Wonderful to hear that, and he's in our thoughts and prayers for a speedy recovery. There you go.
I don't know why we're folding before we put our name in.
I know, it's, I know, yeah, right.
That's instinctual.
Put your name on top and fold it for secrecy, yeah, right.
Maybe somebody in a hotel would know.
And that would be Barb Barnes Buchanan with four votes?
Five.
Five votes.
Okay, Barbara received five votes. Were there other votes?
We also had a vote for Russell Wynn, and we have two votes for Russ Wynn.
Okay, congratulations, Barbara. I know she was here earlier, but that'll be a great addition to the team. Thank you, applicants, for applying, and we encourage you to stay involved. Thank you very much.
Somebody make a motion on that, to that effect, and motions to...
Yeah, to accept, I'll make that motion.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, further discussion, counsel? To accept Barbara Barnes Buchanan to the zoning board? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slacko?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much, and now we're moving on to, let's see, where are we here?
We're at mayor, mayor roundtable.
That's what I thought, okay.
We're good.
We're good?
I'm good.
Resolution appointing one member? There we go, that's good. Approval of minutes?
Well, hang on a second, I just had, I know, it's been a long meeting, but real quick.
Yeah, and I apologize, this thing is not correct, so I apologize.
So, real quick, two notes. One is, a big thank you to Larry Keiker. I know I sent you all a note a few weeks ago, and I'm sure you know the county commission met, and they approved their staff working with our staff. Carl, did you want to add anything with respect to that?
Briefly, I had a great meeting, hour and fifteen minutes, with the county manager on Friday. Couldn't have gone better. We were able to discuss a lot of different issues, including the quadrant plan, Benita Beach Road, and they are positioned to certainly listen to our proposals. In fact, I think that meeting's going to be occurring tomorrow between our staff and the lead DOT folks, so that's, and that was a direct result, I believe, of Commissioner Keiker's involvement in this.
Thank you. And then the other thing is, I know people are going to Florida League, but tomorrow there's going to be a Built Environment meeting here, it's part of the Blue Zones Project, and all council members are invited to come. It's been noticed, so everybody can come.
Great, great, yeah. Thank you, Peter. Mike? Down at this end? Okay.
I did.
Yeah, Steve, go ahead, yes, please.
There'll be another meeting, but I just want to make sure people are aware that the nine-eleven is coming up, and it's going to be six p.m. at the Lyles Hotel. Also, I want to say, I want to thank Rotary Club in the morning. There's a Law and Order Ball that's held every year for the last three years, and Rotary Club approved, it's a hundred-dollar, a hundred-and-fifty dollars a person, so Rotary Club approved three deputies from our CPU unit and their spouses to attend that ball.
Okay, great, great. Greg?
I'm all good.
Amy?
I'm finished.
I just got the smile, I like that.
I've run out of little baggies over here.
I'm sorry, I apologize, but I have to...
No, 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 and we're going, momentarily, food is on the way.
I'll be fainting here if I don't have my protein.
All right, now, approval of the minutes?
So moved.
So moved, there's a second, further discussion, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slacko?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Okay, great, now we're going to move on to public comment. Any member of the public like to speak at this time?
I can't, I have a little...
Alex Grant, again, I hope that you'll read this little memo, and then make comments at the next meeting, but basically, if the federal government does nothing on the local Zika virus problem, then it's in our court, and I'm volunteering myself, and I'm also suggesting that all the certified pest control operators, those are residents in the city of Benita Springs, join me in this Zika working group plan that I'm proposing.
Okay.